The council will come to order. Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Laspada, Alderman Hopkins, Alderman Dowell, Alderman King, Alderman Harriston, Alderman Sawyer, Alderman Mitchell, Alderman Harris, Alderman Beal, Alderman Zalowski Garza, Alderman Thompson, Alderman Cardness, Alderman Quinn, Alderman Burke, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Coleman, Alderman Moore, Alderman Curtis, Alderman O'Shea, Alderman Taylor, Alderman Brookins, Alderman Rodriguez, Alderman Tabarez, Alderman Scott, Alderman Secho Lopez, Alderman Maldonado, Alderman Burnett, Alderman Urban, Alderman Talafaro, Alderman Raboyas, Alderman Cardona, Alderman Wagaskap, Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez, Alderman Austin, Alderman Ramirez Rosa, Alderman Viegas, Alderman Metz, Alderman Spassato, Alderman Nugent, Alderman Vasquez, Alderman Napolitano, Alderman Riley, Alderman Smith, Alderman Tunney, Alderman Gardner, Alderman Kapelman, Alderman Martin, Alderman Osterman, Alderman Hadden, Alderman Silverstein. Alderman Scott is present. Alderman Secho is present. Your honor, we have a quorum present.
We have a quorum. The Pledge of Allegiance will be recited by Alderman Dowell. Please stand.
(Inaudible) from the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, undivisible, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for the invocation, which will be delivered by Father Michael Caruso of St. Ignatius Church.
Good morning, everyone, and thank you for welcoming me today for delivery of this invocation. I bring greetings on behalf of our 150th anniversary at St. Ignatius College Prep. And we're delighted to be here. I'm here joined by our Principal Brianna Laco, Vice President for Development, John Chandler, and Eileen Junkins guiding us. You should know, we are the grandparent institution of Loyola University, Loyola Academy, Cristo Rey Jesuit High School, Christ the King Jesuit High School, and also Chicago Jesuit Academy. So we are delighted to be here today and ask God's blessing upon all of you and your work. So let us pray. As St. Ignatius College Prep celebrates this anniversary of 150 years of educational service to the city of Chicago and the greater region, we do so in a spirit of gratitude. As part of the extensive educational mission of the Catholic Church in Chicago, we are grateful to be an anchor for our neighborhood and a source of light for the city of Chicago. We continue to welcome all students of promise and ability, not under their family's capacity to pay tuition. And we affirm our mission, which guides our work as a partner in building a just and caring society. Our mission reads, "St. Ignatius College Prep, a Jesuit Catholic school in the heart of Chicago, is a diverse community dedicated to educating young men and women for lives of faith, love, service, and leadership. Through outstanding teaching and personal formation, the school challenges its talented student body to intellectual excellence, integrity, and lifelong learning and growth. Inspired by the Gospel of Jesus Christ, this community strives to use God's gifts to promote social justice for the greater glory of God. Over the years, we have produced leaders for every profession, men and women of goodwill, newscaster John Hasbrook, speaker Michael Madigan, alderman Rod Sawyer, and Patrick Thompson, leading financial strategists Melody Hobson and Richard Dreehouse, entertainer Bob Newhart and John Mulaney. Each of these men and women represent 30,000 alumni who are your neighbors, coworkers, and constituents. We are grateful for the support of the past and present leaders of the city of Chicago. Just as our founder, Father Arnold Damon, sought to foster a healthy partnership in educating the youth of Chicago to take their place in serving the common good, we affirm today our collaboration with the members of this chamber and ask that God will pour out His abundant blessings upon this body. May all of your deliberations, decisions, and projects serve the common good and be blessed by Almighty God. And we make this prayer in His holy name. Amen. Thank you.
We will now have public comment.
The council will now begin the public comment period, which is limited to a maximum of 30 minutes. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. The time remaining for each speaker is shown on the clock on the wall. Any written comments that have been submitted will be available for automatic review at the city clerk's desk. Please remember, this is a forum for public comments and not questions. This first speaker is Ronald Jackson.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Good morning, Mayor Lightfoot. I guess you remember me. Thirty-four forums and Art Norman made a joke of it. He said, "There is one of you that will be considered the chosen one." Mayor Lightfoot, you are now that chosen one. But there is a disparity in the city of Chicago that is still going unaddressed, and that is the disparity of public mental health services that should be implemented throughout this whole entire city. All 77 communities of this city amongst its 50 wards are begging. You can't sit up and have these conversations and talk about senseless violence in the city. You can't continue to hold these backroom meetings and talk about services for other elements until you actually start talking about the root cause of what is happening in our communities, the disparities for those people with disabilities that access living would address, the homelessness in the city of Chicago, the things that are really at the core root of what is needed to better our city. And that is when you fail to look at public mental health services. But I need to take a moment because a beautiful young lady, well, elderly lady by the name of Dorothy Gray, actually sent you a book that I failed to bring with me because it talks about the caterpillar having 16 feet and going through a metamorphosis for which it turns into a butterfly. That's what we need to do. We need to take each one of those 16 elements that has put us in a state of suffrage and made sure that it become a metamorphosis that people could actually believe in and take wings and fly. So I'm asking you, push forward. Let's not stall anymore on the task force for looking at mental health services. As I come to a close, I would also ask that, thank you for allowing me this opportunity of being the first public speaker in a long time, and especially being a man of color. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Jackson. The next speaker is Mr. George Blakemore.
Mr. George Blakemore. Who is Mr. Blakemore? Mr. Blakemore is a hater. He hates corruption. He hates fraud, waste, and abuse. He hates a wicked democratic machine that has been going on here in this city. He hates a sanctuary too. Mr. Blakemore hated. Why do you feel this way, Mr. Blakemore? Because the negative effect that it has on the black community. If anybody needs sanctuary, it's black people. These illegal peoples are coming over in the workforce, getting jobs, goods, service, health, education, and everything that the blacks are entitled to by being a legal citizen. Illegal is against the law. Legal is within the law. So again, I challenge black leadership, black leadership. I've never heard a black person get up to one of our leaders and talk about the negative effect of gentrification when it comes to illegal immigrants coming in. They're silent, but these Hispanics always advocate for their people, legal or illegal. They will come up and tell you and help their people. Ours won't. Something is wrong with the black leadership here. When you see 300,000 people from this city leaving, blacks and other people coming into this city, white Hispanic agents, why? The question that Mr. Blakemore is asking, why are black people leaving the city of Chicago? Why are they leaving Cook County? What's the issue that they say, "We gotta get out of here"? No jobs they're receiving, goods are contracts, abandoned lots, a ghetto, no stores. But some of the reason is because you make bad choices. You choose bad leaders. You got no stores. You don't even have a liquor store, a drive-in, nothing in these ghettos because you got bad leadership and you continuously select them. You won't have one Hispanic officer will get up and talk against their people, getting their sanctuary, coming in from the south border. They want them here because they're their people, they want to help them. What do ours do? Silence, all of you, all of you are disgraceful. What would motivate you to want somebody else to come in?
Thank you, Mr. Blakemore. The next speaker is Ms. Sandy Schneller. Sandy Schneller.
Good morning, Madam Mayor, City Council members. My name is Sandy Schneller. Crime is on a high in our city. It has reached 8% higher in 2018 with gun violence than it has occurred over the years, reaching 1,407 incidents thus far. July 4th holiday weekend, there were 68 gun crime violences, six fatalities. One particular incident on the near north side of Chicago on Saturday afternoon, July 6th, young men exchanged gunfire back and forth across Division Street, shattering the windows of the Chase Bank. A young lady at 16 years old narrowly escaping with her life as she stood waiting for the CTA bus right in front of that bank. You see, the bus arrived just two minutes before that shooting occurred. What is being done about this? Now, you go out in the summertime with your activities, with your children, and your significant others, and others, but remember, our city is under fire here. You may know that gun violence spiked between July and August on Fridays and Saturdays between the hours of 8:00 p.m. and 2:00 a.m. But remember, our police department should not be weighted down with the blame for this. As leaders of our great city, remember that you hold the key to change here. You are the ones are largely responsible for this. You have at your fingertips all the resources necessary. Encourage your community clergy, encourage business owners and strong residents of the communities to become mentors to our youth. Because you see, they weren't born with guns in their hands. They were nurtured by the wrong people. The mindsets of our youth must be redirected. Their engagements must be rerouted. It's of urgency that the leaders step up. You must not give up. The great and late Thomas Edison said, "Our greatest weakness lies in giving up. The most certain way to succeed is to just always try one more time." Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Schneller. The next speaker is Mr. Melvin Bailey.
Hey, thank you, City Council. Thank you for allowing me to speak one more time. And you know, I'm always advocating for the hardest-to-serve men and women who struggle with social profiling. And Mayor, and I'm just gonna talk about the past and bring it real fastly to the present. Back in 2013, we had a meeting with the Building Department, and these are legal documents. I went online, pulled all the information up, that we was talking about these vacant and abandoned buildings in our community, how we can save them and keep our kids in our community by giving them a job with these vacant and abandoned buildings. And here is the email that we had, because it's legal document now, emails are legal document. And Lawrence Grisham at that time was the commissioner. And Brian Essenberg, Ms. Judy Freeland, Anthony Simpkins, and I'm not apologetic, but I mentioned their name, but I am apologetic that we haven't did anything sooner to make sure that we can advocate to get these guns now out of the kids' hands. I got a couple of young men here. I know they're not gonna stand up. They off Chicago Avenue and Ridgeway. And Mayor, I heard you talk to the young man on Chicago Avenue and Ridgeway. I went over there, they are here today. And I told them that I will bring them down here so they can at least see how this political process go, they can have a voice. They don't have to pick up a gun. They use their voice to make sure they make changes in their community. And I'd like to say again, and I have to send a shout-out up to Washington, D.C., Ms. Maxine Waters. Ms. Maxine Waters, when I went, me and Mr. Gator Bradley, we went up to Washington to get into the banking program for Chicago. I couldn't link up with the Housing Department here. We had to go to D.C. and get with Maxine Waters, and she said, "What you need?" Just the Congresswoman. She said, "Melvin, don't worry about it. I'm gonna put you into F.A., F.A., which is Federal Housing Finance Agent, which dealing with Fannie Mae and Freddie Mac." She said, "You can look at all their inventory for the city of Chicago and start rehabbing houses." She said, "What's going on in Chicago?" I said, "I don't know. That's why I'm up here in Washington, D.C., talking to you." That's a shame I had to go all the way to Washington, D.C. to get results in Chicago about the vacant and abandoned properties that the bank own and Freddie and Fannie own to try to provide some jobs for these young men in the city of Chicago. Come on now, come on now. That is a disgrace. That's a disgrace for the city of Chicago that I had to fly to D.C. So, in closing, Mayor, we would love to be in the five-year housing plan because we can keep guys right in our neighborhood. They need to rewrite that. And then now, I know I'm gonna get a letter saying, "Melvin, you still owe $10,000 in a water bill." I know, but y'all gave NHS $11 million unforgivable loan. You ain't said nothing about that.
Thank you, Mr. Bailey. The next speaker is Mr. Mark Carter.
Good morning, good morning. You know, I hear this talk of violence going on across the city, and we kind of get it mixed up. We blame it on the people on the ground, but we never look at nepotism, cronyism, and patronage. And because of nepotism, cronyism, and patronage, young people in this city can't get jobs, contracts, and opportunities. Because all the opportunities go to these special interest people that you all are voting for, these special interest contracts that are coming out, the police academy. Y'all got Larry Huggins, people like Larry Huggins acting as a consultant, putting up no type of anything to be liable for the project. You got corrupt people like Burke, king of corruption, Pat Dowell, Pat Dowell over the 3rd Ward, who allowed her son's father to use the Trump Building Initiative where he sits as attorney for Neighborhood Housing Services and took all those older people homes over there. While she sat on the Housing Committee, sent the money to her son's father. You see? But you know what? Now that we're older, we gonna rise up. Two major oppositions, the unions and this immigration policy in this city. If you gonna give sanctuary to illegal immigrants, you gonna give sanctuary to people that have a certain times for crime committed. And we gonna make you do it. We gonna raise so much hell, you gonna do it. And we gonna do it because we have no choice but to make you do it. We don't have nothing else to lose but our change. When our young people don't go to work, they die and go to jail. That's the alternative for not being able to go to work in this city. We haven't said anything in a few years. Y'all about to see us. You all are voting. We had to sue Chicago Housing Authority in order to enforce the HUD Act, Mayor. In order to enforce this HUD Act so low and barely low income people can eat in accordance with the HUD Act in Section 3, we had to sue Chicago Housing Authority. Well, now it's time for us to sue the city of Chicago and everybody else that are getting the HUD funds, who allowing the unions to control all the jobs and opportunities. See, we don't have no natural fear of these so-called gangsters in the unions. We come from the same thing they come from. We believe in the same bloodshed that they believe in. Fighting for opportunities for young men and women, I've been arrested almost 200 times. I didn't go to jail that many times when I was in the streets. But it seem like to do right, they hate you more than you stood on the corners.
Thank you, Mr. Carter. Your time has expired. The next speaker is Mr. Paul McKinley.
Thank you very much, Mayor, ladies and gentlemen, and frenemies, but there are some enemies in this crowd. I belong to an ex-federal organization called Vote, and I see that we really can't get y'all attention. Y'all really not feeling us. No matter how many young men and women are murdered in our neighborhood, whether it's Inglewood, Roslyn, Landale, Austin, South Side, West Side, seem like we can't get y'all attention unless we clown with you. So we gonna have to raise the people up and come down here. Because that's the only way you understand that black folks got a stake in Chicago. If black folks got 48% in Chicago, 48% of African-Americans in Chicago, and 48% of all construction in these communities, we need to work for it. Not only is it 48%, that means 48% of the taxes we're paying. If we paying 48% of the taxes, then anything that's worked in our neighborhood, we should be able to work and make some money. But that's not happening. Mayor, you receive a lot of donations from the unions to keep quiet, to not say anything, to watch them work in your people, because you're one of us. Your people come from us. They were slaves just like my people was too. And you under the same natural law our people are under. Your grandmama, great-grandmamas were slaves like mine. So it's time for you to step up. You can take other coins, or you can proclaim other genders. You can do all that. But you gonna deal with black folks, and you gonna put black folks to work. I'm talking about black folk, just like when you went down in the Latino community, you dealt with their issue. That was a good move. You showed the Latinos that I'm for you. There's nothing wrong with that. But now you gonna do something for black folk, because you're one of us, you our people. Whether you like it or not, you belong to us. And so you gonna help black folks. Now, I didn't move over for Mayor Daley, and he was a gangster for real, and I wasn't trying to step aside for Ron Emanuel. And he went the same way in disgrace. Now, if we can work with the mayor to put our people to work, oh, hey, we just have to clown and shut the town down. But our people gonna eat in this town. You not chasing us out of Chicago. And specifically, you not gonna punish me or the people that I was with who stood on Laquan McDonald and send Van Dyke to jail where he belong. That's where he belong. So I'm not making a veiled threat. I'm saying black folks gonna protest if we ain't eating.
Thank you for your time, Mr. McKinley. The next speaker is Mr. Edmund Dante Hamilton.
Good morning, Mayor Lightfoot, council members, city clerk, citizens, and the press. I'd like to share a little bit of background about myself, and then I'd like to make my comment. I'm Dante Hamilton. I'm originally from Cleveland, Ohio, grew up in CMHA, which is Cuyahoga Metropolitan Housing Authority. However, I live here in Chicago since 1990. I have a business, and it's located downtown here in Chicago. I've been there since 1990. You may be familiar with the space, Ms. Lightfoot. It's 9 West Washington Street. You may have seen some of the Lightfoot for Chicago signs as you exited out of the conference room one day. So the reason that I'm here today is because, as you all may know, there's a Cannabis Regulation and Tax Act that was just passed and signed into law June 25th by the Governor Pritzker. It includes some groundbreaking social equity provisions. However, there's a lesser-known piece of legislation called the Limited Cooperative Association Act, which becomes effective January 1st, 2020, as does the Cannabis Regulation Act. So what I'm here to say is, is that there should be a way in which the city, the council members, D.K.s, can help people of color who look like you and me get a piece of the cannabis business enterprise that's getting ready to be a big business here in Chicago. I've come up with a solution that I think is a great idea, and that's to create a Chicago Cannabis Week, similar to like Lola Palooza and other events. That would be managed by an Illinois worker cooperative that involves the residents and the people from the disproportionately impacted area of the South and West Sides. They would have a ownership in this event, they would manage the event, and they would share in the profits of the event. I feel like this is something that could be done. It's modeled after the National Cannabis Festival in D.C., the European Cannabis Week, and Canadian Cannabis Week. I'd like to ask the support, and I know I'm not supposed to ask, but I feel that there should be a way in which the city of Chicago could help people of color get into the cannabis business before it becomes big marijuana, which you've seen in the last couple of weeks through the media, buyouts into millions, mega-millions. We're not a part of that. And I feel that Chicago Cannabis Week, even though it's an idea that I created, it should be something like that that the city supports to help people of color get into the business because the social equity provisions in the law provide for us to become a cannabis business entity. And that's just one idea, and I feel that the citizens of Chicago should be included, and we need to be inclusive in this.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Hamilton. The next speaker is Rabbi Michael Ben Yosef.
Shalom alaikum. Peace and blessings to the world and those that stand in need of prayer. Mayor Lightfoot, I need your undivided attention for this short moment. My name is Rabbi Michael Ben Yosef, President and Takun Kai International. I'm here on behalf of the 75 murders, the women who have been killed in our city, and there has not been a not one investigation. Uh-uh, I need your undivided attention. I need your undivided attention, Mayor Lightfoot. I need your undivided attention.
Sir, proceed with your statement.
I'm here because...
You don't stand there as a man and tell me what to do when I was actually getting my notebook to take some notes. So you want to talk, talk, you're wasting your time. But don't ever, ever tell me what to do when I'm standing here conducting the business of the people. You understand that, sir?
I apologize, Mayor, but there are families who are mourning, who are grieving, who will need justice for their families. And I'm here on their behalf because you have failed. You sat here and said you're concerned about the families, and you have not launched an investigation, have not called out the serial killer that's in our city, you have not put forth an investigation and called the FBI into this city to deliver a message of truth for our people. Right now, in Ohio, right now, has a serial killer, right now, they have already launched an investigation, and you sit there in your seat and have not launched an investigation, have used your puppet Eddie Johnston, and said that there is no evidence when we have a murder accountability project that says that there's actual situations and proof that strangulation, that those women who were found in alleys were sitting here killed, and there has not been any sense of urgency for our people. And I'm here for the people, and you need to understand what it's about, our people. It must be heard, you must be accountable for the actions you're standing here for.
Thank you, Rabbi Ben Yosef. The next speaker is Ms. Gynna Stamps. The next speaker is Ms. Juana Stamps.
Good morning. Kansas City Hall. The correct pronunciation of my name is Juana. I know you've heard a lot this morning, and I just came to let you know that the West Side of Chicago, my organization, Chemo, has merged with another non-for-profit organization, ABT. And I want to thank Alderman Kapperman for working with us to help design a proposal or a document that we would like to present to you on what we would like to do on the West Side of Chicago as it relates to youth and young adults. Today, I brought with me one of the young people who... Oh, thank you, I'm sorry. One of the young people who's a part of the project that we're doing, and it's to... We're trying to reach out to the at-risk youth. The only way we can do that is to be out in the community. We do need the resources, however, our commitment is better than us just waiting for the resources, and that's why we've already started our program. We have 15 young people engaged in our program, and the program is to help build lives and to save lives. And I just want you to know that I'm standing true to my commitment, that you are not in this by yourself, and it will not be overnight that the work gets done, and I commend you for the work you have already done. So thank you, Mayor Lightfoot, and Alderman Kapperman.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Stamps. The next speaker is Pat Murray.
I'm here to talk about the police board hearing that I went to last Thursday. I knew walking in that those police officers had no chance of getting their jobs back. This is a politically put-together forum that was put together by the last mayor, and as a result of that, I knew that there was no chance. But let me just talk about the mayor. The problems that occurred with this case occurred on the 5th floor. They were concealed from the beginning and just made this worse and worse. And these officers took the brunt of it. They did their jobs. They responded to that call, and they did their jobs the way that they were. The code of silence, like I said, started upstairs. These police officers, let's talk about them. Four police officers, one's a sergeant, three POs. They served the City of Chicago for seven years. In seven years, they had 177 honorable mentions, two department commendations, nine physical fitness awards, they had 13 other awards for attendance. They had one sustained CR number for lost radio in seven years of police work. They came to work every day, they're pillars of their society. Now what happens to them? What happens to these people? They're fired, they can't get their credentials, they're not gonna be able to work and do what they want. This stigma's gonna follow them forever. We are gonna fight this, okay? If this was in front of a judge like Dominica Stevenson, she scolded the special prosecutor for bringing that last case in front of her and said, "This is actually a joke." All right? Nobody worked together to take and form a conspiracy. Mayor, I heard you say yesterday basically that stronger and safer, stronger and safer police officers. Police officers across the city are looking at this message that was sent out by this board that, you know what, if you're gonna respond to a scene, there's a good chance you're gonna get fired if, if you're not backed up. This is sending a negative message, and we are gonna fight this because, you know, we need to fight this because these officers did nothing wrong. Finally, finally, thank you. Finally, the exempt members that were involved in this, they were exempt from prosecution, discipline, and a lot of them just took their pensions and walked away. We are here to stand behind our police officers, and that's why I'm here today to talk about this. Thank you very much. We appreciate your support.
Thank you, Mr. Murray. The next speaker is J.L. Gross.
Good afternoon, City Council and the mayor. On the one hand, I gotta be honest, I'm an angry black man. On the one hand, I'm an angry black man, but I'm angry at the City of Chicago, and this goes out to the City of Chicago, not just Alderman and the mayor. We can't seem to get our act together when it comes to racism and classism in this city. And that's problematic, very problematic for me, and that's what I'm angry about. You know, everybody wants to point the finger at everybody else and say, "There's a problem." That's not the problem. But I'm primarily here to speak about the disenfranchised people. I represent LSNA, and I'm a member of Logan Square Neighborhood Association, and I'm a member of Chicago Housing Initiative. In fact, I'm their president. I'm all about getting people and families homes, apartments. These people need this severely. And my message to the black caucus, man, is you guys need to get up and straighten up your act and get on board. Really, we need you to help us pass an ordinance called One Chicago, Chicago for All. One Home Chicago is really the name of the thing. But I've been at this for the last 10 years. And it pains me that I come before this august body, and I speak all the time about the needs of the people of Chicago. People need places to stay, not up on the bridges, not up on the whack-a-drive. We need fair housing. Martin Luther King came here 50 years ago to ask for fair housing, and we're still dinning with it. That's wrong, man. I mean, you know, I am... Listen, I'm a... I'm a ex-marine, I'm a combat veteran who fought for this country and this city. I love this country, I love this city, but it has not given me back what I gave to this country and this city. And I'm a... I don't ask nothing for myself, but there are a lot of disenfranchised people who need a place to stay. And you guys are... You guys need to get on board. Alderman, the mayor, the city, we have people who need help, and I'm pleading for that help. I apologize for... I'm just hurt by it. I'm just hurt by this whole thing to that. We come...
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Gross. The time allotted for comment has expired.
This concludes the public comment period. Resolutions?
Congratulations extended to Simbi Jimbrell, Shawnee Davis, and Megan Stats for heroic actions. Resolution from her honor, the mayor, Alderman O'Shea, Alderman Mitchell, and Alderman Taliaferro. Whereas on June 12, 2019, Simbi Jimbrell, a second grade student at Adam Clayton Powell Elementary School on Chicago's South Side, was in the kitchen with her mother, Shawnee Davis, when the unthinkable happened. Ms. Davis began experiencing chest pain and collapsed on the kitchen floor. And whereas six-year-old Simbi knew exactly what to do, she immediately dialed City's 911 emergency telephone number to request help for her mother. And whereas fire call taker Megan Stats, a licensed paramedic for eight years, answered Simbi's call. Realizing something really was wrong, Ms. Stats asked Simbi to check whether her mother was breathing. After learning that Ms. Davis was not breathing, Ms. Stats first told Simbi to keep pressing on her mother's chest, then begin to elicit information from the child about where to send help. And whereas following Ms. Stats' instructions to the letter, Simbi clearly and confidently provided her mother's name, telephone number, address, and door number, as well as the building entry code needed for first responders to access their apartment on the 19th floor. And she kept pushing on her mother's chest until thankfully her mother breathing was restored. And whereas while paramedics rushed to the scene, Ms. Stats kept Simbi on the telephone, reassuring that help was on the way, then soothing her by asking about her age and her favorite subjects at school. Meanwhile, as Ms. Stats' suggestion, Simbi collected her mother's telephone, clothes, purse, house keys, and identification to give the first responders when they arrived at the door. And whereas thanks to the wise decisions and concerted efforts at different times of many different people, this potentially tragic story has a happy ending, where Ms. Davis recovered and is doing well. And whereas six-year-old Simbi is the hero of the day, everyone is amazed that such a young child would have presence of mind to call 911 for help and administer life-saving chest compressions to her mother and to provide Ms. Stats with detailed information about her mother's condition and location. Simbi deserves special recognition for studying hard and listening so closely to her teachers and mentors at school. She learned about calling 911 from a CAPS officer during a school presentation. And whereas exemplary mother and role model, Ms. Davis deserves kudos for working with Simbi to ensure that she mastered critical information, such as her name, address, and telephone number, and acquired other important basic skills. Ms. Davis' selfless efforts to teach Simbi was amply rewarded and ultimately served to save Ms. Davis's life. And whereas the professionalism and compassion shown by fire call taker Megan Stats when shepherding six-year-old Simbi through the most difficult 10 minutes imaginable, is a testament to Ms. Stats' superior training, sensitivity, and dedication to her job. Ms. Stats, who exemplifies the skill, empathy, and hard work for our 911 call takers and dispatchers, will be sorely missed at OEMC when she embarks this month on her new career as a Chicago firefighter. Now therefore, be it resolved that we, the mayor, and members of the City Council of the City of Chicago, assembled the 24th day of July 2019, do hereby honor and commend Simbi Jimbrell, Shawnee Davis, and Megan Stats for their contributions in saving Ms. Davis's life, and be it further resolved that suitable copies of this resolution be presented to Simbi Jimbrell, Shawnee Davis, and Megan Stats and placed on permanent record in Megan Stats' personal file as a token of our appreciation and esteem.
Alderman Mitchell?
The President, I am proud to be associated with this resolution. How many times do you hear of a young seven-year-old changing the life, saving the life?
So Alderman Mitchell, do you want to move to make for a temporary suspension of the rules?
I'm so proud of her.
So your motion is a temporary suspension of the rules for immediate consideration of the resolution?
I move for temporary suspension of the rules for the immediate consideration of the resolution.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. Now, Alderman Mitchell.
So once again, how many times do we see a seven-year-old that saved the life of the woman that gave her life? This is a... I'm proud to be associated with this resolution. All too many times we hear about things in the press that our kids are doing wrong, but look what we have now. She had the presence of mind, the maturity to call and work with 911, and I'm extremely proud of that. And special kudos go out to the parents and the principal and CAPS, because it takes a village, and our village seems like it's been very successful over there. So thank you.
The Chair recognizes Alderman O'Shea.
Thank you, Madam President. I do stand in support of this resolution. Simbi, you are a hero. Everything worked perfect that day. We had an emergency. This young girl, exemplary student at Adam Clayton Powell, knew what to do, knew how to handle it, and how lucky are we that on the other end of that phone call was a dedicated call taker from OEMC. If you talk to first responders or call takers at OEMC, oftentimes this doesn't happen. Oftentimes, someone involved in this scenario isn't prepared, isn't trained. But this worked out, which brings us all here together today. Simbi, you are a hero. And Megan, you are a hero also. Now, a little bit about Megan. She grew up on the Northwest Side. And then she got smart and she moved south. I'm proud to say that she's a resident of the Fighting 19th Ward. I'm proud to say that she is a Chicago White Sox fan. Her father served as a Chicago firefighter, her mother served as a paramedic. Mark is here with her today, also a paramedic, and little Jimmy. Jimmy, who is far too young to know all that is going on today, but you, young man, have a mother who's a hero. Johnny, I'm so glad that we are all here together today because of your wonderful daughter. Thank you.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Moore.
Thank you, Madam President. I stand in support of this resolution. Not only is this young lady is a hero, she's also good at taking your money because she's so smart. And I asked her what is her favorite subject, and she said math, and just like I do in my schools, I give students a little test, and she didn't even use her fingers, and she was rolling the numbers off. So when you do that, you get blessed. So you guys give her a hand for being a smart young lady. Without a lot of time, I just want to echo everything that my colleagues have said. But for the time's sake, parents, her mom and dad are here. You guys, that's a testament to your parentage, both of you, and what you do for your... what you did for your daughter here and taught her that. But for her to stay cool, but as Alderman O'Shea pointed out, and we've seen it on many times, Ms. OEMC, what's your name again? I'm sorry. Megan, many times you all heard when kids call the phone, somebody on the line to say, "Stop playing on the phone," and hang up. Megan, that was a big deal that you knew and took your time to listen to that young lady, and she evidently articulated herself well enough that allowed you to want to listen to her to help save her mother. So congratulations and thank you, and I want to thank all her family and friends who came out to support her, because that takes a village to show that type of love for someone. So, Simbi, keep doing what you do, we're proud of you, and we look forward to seeing good things, more better things from you in the future. Thank you.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Taliaferro.
I stand in support of this resolution. Simbi, I just want... Simbi, I can't see you over there. How are you doing, Simbi? Simbi, I just want to say you are very, very brave, and you were very courageous to help save your mom. save your mom's life. You are not only a hero to us, but you are a hero to your mom, you are a hero to your family. Thank you so much for being there to help your mom. You did exactly what your mom and dad taught you when there's, and she's yawning on my speech, too. That's not the first time, though. But you did exactly what your mom and dad taught you, so thank you so much. And to the 911 operator, Ms. Stats, thank you. I heard a part of the dispatched call, and you were so, so brave as well and calm under pressure. And I love what you asked, Simbi. You asked her what she wanted to do in the future. All part why all of this was going on, and she said, "I want to be a police officer." You stole my heart right then, because I'm a 23-year veteran of the police department. So thank you so much for all, and I know, I know Ms. Davis is very, very proud of you, and your dad's very proud, but you sit here today because of your daughter, and as one of my colleagues says, she sits here today because of you. Thank you so much. Thank you, Madam President.
The chair recognizes Alderman Wiegasback.
Thank you, Madam President. First, I just want to say thank you to the fire call taker, Ms. Stats. You know, we hope that when you're serving the whole city like this, the response from every call taker is the same. And I know it is, because we've listened over the years to OEMC about training that you get and how you need to respond to people. And there's been times when there's, you know, difficult situations like this, but it just proves that all the training that you're getting and the way you respond is the best that you can do for our city. To Simbi's mom and dad, I have a six- and seven-year-old, and, you know, Simbi, I was talking to them about this last night, this story, and they kept asking questions. What did she do? What did she do next? Then what did she do? And what was the operator saying? And we try to teach our kids how to respond in these situations. You never know what's going to happen. But, Simbi, I can't say enough about what you did for your parents, what you did for all of us here, and what you do for my kids by teaching them a lesson here about how they can respond. And I'm going to go home tonight and talk to them again, and maybe I can get a selfie with you later on. It would be great to see you someday being an OEMC operator and helping another future child out there. Thank you very much for your work. Thank you, Madam President.
The chair recognizes Alderman Hairston.
Thank you, Madam President. I too rise in support of this resolution. Simbi, you are fabulous. You epitomize what a very strong young lady looks like. You are poised, you are cool under pressure, you know what to do, you listen, you pay attention, and I think you should be applauded from that. I am so proud of you and what you did, and so I just want to say congratulations to you, and I noticed that you have the princess wave down, so I'm expecting great things from you. Congratulations.
The chair recognizes Alderman Napolitano, who is going to try to redeem the Northwest Side that was disperged by Alderman O'Shea.
Thank you, Madam President. I know you saw that coming. Simbi, just take a look behind you and look at the smiles of this panel. What you've done is you kept, you kept the family happy, you kept a family alive, and it's not just the smiles, it's the tears. And as a father of three children, two of them girls, in a house where girls rule and boys rule, you are an inspiration. You're an inspiration to my daughters. Congratulations, this is terrific. And to Megan, and to Alderman O'Shea as well, I think everything comes to your grassroots and where you're brought up, and I could tell those smarts that you had on the line came from the strong 41st Ward on the Northwest Side, and we're proud to say that you were one of ours as well. But congratulations to that entire panel. Your smiles actually give me chills, and this is what this is all about. Terrific, terrific resolution. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Let me also just add my comments. I had the opportunity to meet with Simbi and her family, and also fire taker, fire call taker Megan Stats, and I think Alderman Moore's point is well taken. It shows that she's very well-trained to hang in there and realize that a child calling actually signaling an emergency, so she really ought to be commended. And then walking through and talking to young Simbi in a way that she can understand and actually help her mother is really tremendous, and I think shows off the great training at OEMC, which of course, I'm partial to, since I spent a little bit of time there. But thank you all, and thanks for bringing this resolution forward. Resolutions?
Congratulations extended to the Red Summer on 100th Anniversary. A resolution from her honor, the mayor, Alderman King, Alderman Dahl, and Alderman Irvin. Whereas 2019 marks the 100th anniversary of Red Summer, a shameful event that saw the murder and injury of hundreds of people in race riots across the United States, some of the worst which occurred in the city of Chicago. And whereas competition for jobs and housing at the end of World War I led to a host of social and economic problems that fed into already simmering racial tensions.
Madam Clerk, please, can we have quiet in the chamber?
Whereas in Chicago, those tensions boiled over with the murder of African-American youth, who while seeking relief in Lake Michigan during a heat wave, drifted a beach near 29th Street and was informally, which that was informally segregated for whites only. And whereas that youth, Eugene Williams, was floating on a raft with others when he was struck in the head by a stone thrown by a white man standing on a breakwater. Williams lost his grip on the raft and drowned. A white police officer refused to arrest the white man who threw the stone, and instead arrested an African-American man. When African-Americans objected to this injustice, they were attacked by white beachgoers. And whereas this incident's violence quickly spread beyond the beach and throughout the city, acts of violence took place, including rioting, vandalism, and arson, with the rioters even taking measures to slow or block the rival fire department and other emergency responders. And whereas rioting took place as far as north as the Loop, but mostly occurred in predominantly African-American neighborhoods, which hundreds of homes and businesses were damaged or destroyed. And whereas the violence continually nearly unchecked, continued nearly unchecked, as does not until the Illinois National Guard became involved, that is brought under control. Whereas between July 27 and August 3, there were 38 deaths directly attributed to the rioting, and another 537 people were injured. The majority of the casualties were African-Americans, including one African-American policeman. And whereas more than 1,000 residents were left homeless as a result of arson and other vandalism, the majority of whom were African-American. Businesses were destroyed, and other businesses locked African-American employees out because they feared a resurgence of violence. Rather than remain and rebuild, many African-Americans fled the city, never to return. Whereas Red Summer is a time in our history that, while painful, represents an opportunity to learn and grow as a city, as a city. Now therefore, be it resolved that we, the mayor, and members of the city council of the city of Chicago, assemble this 24th day of July 2019, do hereby commemorate the occasion of the 100th anniversary of Red Summer, and be it further resolved that we call upon Chicagoans to continue to work, put aside the racial, ethnic, and economic divisions that gave rise to Red Summer, and come together as one city that promotes the well-being of all.
The chair recognizes Alderman Dahl.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. And members of the city council, I rise in support of this resolution commemorating the 100th anniversary of Red Summer. Mayor, I want to thank you for bringing forth this important resolution, because I believe now, as much as ever, it's important that we heighten awareness of the 1919 race riots. The racism exhibited then has sadly not been eradicated. While the violence of Red Summer swept the entire nation, its roots began in Chicago with the horrible killing of Eugene Williams, killed for the crime of drifting from the 31st Street Beach into the informally segregated 29th Street Beach. This heinous murder led to citywide riots that claimed the lives of 38 people, injured 537, and displaced over 1,000 residents, and destroyed countless African-American businesses. Yet despite this tragedy, hardly anyone knows about the race riots of 1919. It's not taught in our schools, it hasn't received the Hollywood movie treatment, and because of that, many of the underlying issues, racism, inequity, mistrust, that led to that summer, are still prevalent in our society today. That is why it is so important that we highlight the Red Summer with this resolution. We must move forward as a society, and to do so, we have to learn from the past and discuss racism in this country. There are a host of Red Summer activities going on this week. In the 3rd ward on this Saturday, there's a bike tour led by Go Bronsville through Bronsville and Bridgeport to explore the places where violence broke out. And community groups are holding important discussions on this event, including ones hosted by architecture journalist Lee Bay, Chicago journalist and author Natalie Moore, history professor Peter Cole, Good Kids Mad City, and the Red Clay Dance Company. Despite the horrific violence, the silver lining was that the Red Summer led to the strengthening of organizations like the NAACP, and birthed an entire generation of civil rights leaders that eventually made historic gains for African-Americans across this country. Hopefully, by remembering this event today, we can have the same galvanizing impact for a new generation of African-Americans moving forward as it had on the people that lived through it in 1919. Thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much, Alderman Dahl. I just want to add to your comments that we will be sponsoring an official city remembrance of this event on the 29th. More details will follow later today. Thank you. Alderman Mitchell?
Madam President, I move adoption of the foregoing resolutions in the omnibus.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
And now move we return to the regular order of business.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. Communications?
A series of communications for her honor, the mayor, to the honorable the city council of the city of Chicago. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of the city comptroller, I transmit here with an ordinance amending various provisions of municipal code regarding fines, fees, and payment plans. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated very truly yours. Lori E. Lightfoot, mayor, refer to the committee on finance. At the request of the, ladies and gentlemen, at the request of the commissioner of aviation, I transmit here with, together with Alderman O'Shea, ordinance authorizing execution of concession, lease, and lease agreement with clear regarding biometric screening. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated very truly yours. Lori E. Lightfoot, mayor, refer to the committee on aviation. Ladies and gentlemen, the request of commissioner of aviation, transmit here with an ordinance authorizing amendment to ground lease of O'Hare International Airport with Area O'Hare Express LLC. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated very truly yours. Very truly yours, Lori E. Lightfoot, mayor, refer to the committee on aviation. Ladies and gentlemen, the request of the budget director, I transmit here a fund 925 amendment. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated very truly yours. Lori Lightfoot, mayor, refer to the committee on budget and government operations. Ladies and gentlemen, the request of commissioner of planning and development, I transmit here with ordinance authorizing Class C tax status for property located at 2745 West Roscoe. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated very truly yours. Lori E. Lightfoot, mayor, refer to the committee on economic capital and technology development. Ladies and gentlemen, the request of corporation counsel, I transmit here with an ordinance amending chapter 256 municipal code regarding conditions for release of reports. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated very truly yours. Lori Lightfoot, mayor, refer to the committee on ethics and government oversight. Ladies and gentlemen, the request of commissioner of housing, I transmit here an ordinance authorizing allocation of affordable housing opportunity funds for affordable ownership and housing program pilot. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated very truly yours. Lori E. Lightfoot, mayor, refer to the committee on housing and real estate. Ladies and gentlemen, the request of commissioner of fleet and facility management, transmit here an ordinance authorizing execution of a sublease agreement for property located in 1111 South Western Avenue. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated very truly yours. Lori Lightfoot, mayor, refer to the committee on housing and real estate. Ladies and gentlemen, the request of commissioner of transportation, transmit here with an ordinance authorizing amendments to previously executed agreements with various railroads in Chicago Park District regarding the Wells Wentworth Court Connector. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated very truly yours. Lori Lightfoot, mayor, refer to the committee on housing and real estate. Ladies and gentlemen, the request of commissioner of transportation, I transmit here with an ordinance authorizing acquisition of property on portions of West Clarence Avenue. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated very truly yours. Lori Lightfoot, mayor, refer to the committee on housing and real estate. Ladies and gentlemen, the request of commissioner of planning and development, I transmit here an ordinance authorizing the sale of city-owned property. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated very truly yours. Lori Lightfoot, mayor, refer to the committee on housing and real estate. Ladies and gentlemen, the request of commissioner of planning and development, I transmit here with ordinance authorizing expenditure of open space impact fee funds. Your favorable consideration of these ordinance will be appreciated very truly yours. Lori Lightfoot, mayor, refer to the committee on special events, cultural affairs, and recreation. Ladies and gentlemen, the request of commissioner of planning and development, I transmit here with, together with Alderman Burnett, an ordinance amending the Kinsey Industrial Quarter. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated very truly yours. Lori Lightfoot, mayor, refer to the committee on zoning landmarks and building standards. Ladies and gentlemen, I've appointed Rishma Sony as city comptroller. Your favorable consideration of this appointment will be appreciated very truly yours. Lori Lightfoot, mayor, for the committee on finance. Ladies and gentlemen, I transmit here, here with appointments to the Chicago Public Library Board. Your favorable consideration of these appointments will be appreciated very truly yours. Lori Lightfoot, mayor, for the committee on budget and government operations. Ladies and gentlemen, I transmit here, here with appointments to various special service areas. Your favorable consideration of these appointments are appreciated very truly yours. Lori Lightfoot, mayor, for the committee on economic capital and technology development. Ladies and gentlemen, I transmit here appointments on Board of Trustees of Community College District Number 508. Your favorable consideration of these appointments will be appreciated very truly yours. Lori Lightfoot, mayor, for the committee on education and child development. Ladies and gentlemen, I here, I transmit here with appointments to Chicago Police Board. Your favorable consideration of these appointments will be appreciated very truly yours. Lori Lightfoot, mayor, refer to the committee on public safety. Ladies and gentlemen, I appoint, have appointed Jose Munoz as commissioner of the Chicago Park District for term effective immediately and expiring April 25, 2020, to complete the unexpired term of Jesse Ruiz, who has resigned. Your favorable consideration of this appointment will be appreciated very truly yours. Lori Lightfoot, refer to the committee on special events, cultural affairs, and recreation. Ladies and gentlemen, I transmit here with appointments to Chicago Plan Commission. Your favorable consideration of these appointments will be appreciated very truly yours. Lori Lightfoot, mayor, refer to the committee on zoning landmarks and building standards. Ladies and gentlemen, I transmit here with appointments to the Zoning Board of Appeals. Your favorable consideration of these appointments will be appreciated very truly yours. Lori Lightfoot, refer to the committee on zoning landmarks and building standards. I, City Clerk Anna Valencia, hereby inform the city council that the following documents were filed in my office relating to the respective subjects designated as follows. Certification of city funding requirement for laborers and retirement board employees annuity and benefit fund of Chicago for tax levy year 2020, payment year 2021. Civilian Office of Police Accountability Quarterly Report for period ended June 30, 2019. Chicago Transit Authority Annual Ride Hailing Fee Report Regarding Use of Proceeds to Fund Infrastructure Improvement. Office of Inspector General's Advisory Report Concerning Inequities in Chicago's Residential Street Infrastructure Management. Office of Inspector General's Audit Report of Chicago Department of Transportation's Billing Process for Commercial Driveway Permit. Annual Fees. Office of Inspector General's Public Safety Section Follow-up Inquiry, September 2018. Review of Chicago Police Department's Manager of School Resource Officers. Office of Inspector General's Quarterly Report for period ended June 30, 2019. And Comprehensive Annual Financial Report of Metropolitan Water Reclamation District of Greater Chicago, Year 2018. I, City Clerk Anna Valencia, also inform the city council that those matters which were considered by the city council at the inaugural meeting held on June 12, 2019, which were required by statute to be published in book or pamphlet form or in one or more newspapers... or in one or more newspapers, were published in pamphlet form on Ju—July 24, 2019 by being fully printed in full text and printed pamphlet copies of the Journal of the Proceedings of the City—Council of the City of Chicago. I also transmit here with the following miscellaneous communications and reports requiring City Council action: zoning reclassification—reclassifications of particular areas which refer to the Committee on Zoning Landmarks and Building Standards; and Claims Against the City of Chicago, which refer to the Committee on Finance; and Correction of December 14, 2016, City Council Journal Proceedings, which refer to the Committee on Committees and Roles. Prohibition of Single-Use Styrofoam Containers from Street Cars and Restaurants, which is referred to the Committee on Environmental Protection Energy; Historical Landmark Designation for Former Lyman Trumbull Public High School Building at 5200 North Ashland Avenue, which is referred to the Committee on Zoning Landmarks and Building Standards; and Demolition of Historical Landmark Building of 1041 West Fulton Market Dash 232 North Carpenter Street, which is referred to the Committee on Zoning Landmarks and Building Standards.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Spazato.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to temporarily suspend the rules. I wanted to bring notice to something that I don't believe most of my colleagues know about, and tomorrow is Pablo's last day. So, just want to make sure everybody knows they could say goodbye to Pablo today, and I want to publicly state I appreciate all he's done in the short time he's been here. He's a fine young man, and I wish you the best wishes. And I'm embarrassed to say Pablo. Pablo, I don't even know your last name all—the time I've been working with you. Everybody just knows you as Pablo. But thank you, Pablo. Thank you, Madam President. If anybody else has anything to say, I appreciate giving them that opportunity.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Scott.
Thank you, Madam—thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to first thank Alderman Spazato for bringing this to the body's attention. Pablo, I want to say thank you for—you haven't been here for a long time, but in the short time that you have been here, I have grown very fond of you and your work ethic and what you've done. Wish you nothing but the best in your next endeavors, and if you ever need anything from me—and I'm sure a lot of the members of my—the body and my colleagues feel the same—if you ever need anything from us, please don't hesitate to call. But I will be calling you because I know where you're going, and I'll be looking for your—for your help. Thank you, Madam President.
I will make sure that Pablo regularly asks you for things. The Chair recognizes Alderman Napolitano.
Madam President, I too rise in support of this. Pablo, what a dynamic person to work with. Always had a smile, no matter how bad a situation was. Extremely quick in responses. You are going to be an absolute benefit to whoever—or to wherever you go. It's been a pleasure working with you, and thank you for doing this as well, Madam President. Thank you.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Viegas.
Thank you, Madam President. I also stand in support of this—even resolution—but acknowledgement. The Mayor's Office has—has had some really great talent come through their IGA department, and it's a shame that we're losing Pablo, but it's good for him that he's going to be landing in the private sector and really being compensated for the talent that he brings. I just wanted to give him a shout-out. Thank you, Madam President.
The Chair recognizes Alderman O'Shea.
Thank you, Madam President. Pablo David, the man with two first names. I just wanted to say it was—it was always good to work with you. You were always very responsive, very helpful, and you had a great, great sense of humor. I look forward to hearing about your next endeavor. Best of luck to you, pal. Appreciate all the help.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Harris.
Madam President, I too rise to say Pablo, you know that I love you. It's been fantastic working with you. I think you're going to be tremendous wherever you go in the private sector, and I know where you're going, but I ain't—but we're going to miss you. So, Godspeed, God bless you.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Garza.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I too rise to congratulate Pablo on his new endeavor. Whoever's getting you is a very, very lucky person. We've never met—you've—you're right, you're always smiling, you're always kind and compassionate. We've never met until you stepped foot into City Hall, but lo and behold, we have mutual friends that we just recently found out about. So, I wish you luck, and if you need anything, don't hesitate to call.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Thompson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Pablo, I too rise in support of what my colleagues are saying, and wish you all the best. Your—your credit to your family, your integrity. You're a terrific worker, and I know you'll do well in whatever you do, and I want to thank you on behalf of the residents of the 11th Ward for what you've been able to do, working with me. You must have gotten the short straw that you drew me, but we work together, and I appreciate everything you've done. Thank you.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Moore.
Thank you. I stand in support of this recognition, and of course, anybody with David in their name has got to be awesome, right? Pablo, I already spoke to you privately, but publicly, I hope other people have watched you, because I said from the time that you came in, there's a balance between working for the Mayor's Administration, making sure that the policies of the Mayor get presented to the Council, and then that balance between what the Council wants and how you do that with both respect to the Council, but yet being able to stay committed to what the Mayor's mission is. And you were able to balance that with great respect, and I appreciate it. I can always say that about everybody that I've worked with my past four years, but you came in, yes, almost acting like you were an expert at this already and knowing how to work with people. And for that, I am grateful for, and I just wish you well on all your endeavors, and yes, we're losing a great asset to this Council and working with you. So, good luck, and I appreciate you. Thank you, Madam President.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Harris.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I too want to rise to say congratulations. You're going to have a hard time not talking to anybody in the evening about work after hours. I think you were like the number-one person that I've talked to after hours about work. So—but it has been a pleasure working with you. I wish you all the best, and you know I'm here if you need me. Thank you.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Sigo Lopez.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, Pablo, I want to—as a freshman Alderman, I gotta say, it was being a pleasure working with you, someone who's learning, who's on the second month on the job. I really appreciate you taking those, you know, those late calls and being responsive in the emails, especially when—when, you know, there's some—some of those things as freshman Alderman, we're just getting familiarized and being patient. We really appreciate all the support for the 25th Ward. We had many big projects right off the bat, and we're really instrumental in—in dealing with that in a timely fashion. So, thank you, wishing you the best, and I really appreciate all the—all the support. Thank you.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Austin.
Thank you, Madam President. I too rise to salute you, Pablo. You have been an individual—I echo the facts of what Alderman Moore was saying, but you're an individual that you can sit down and talk with and get a resolution on whatever your concerns are, and I'm grateful for you for being able to sit down and talk with you on many matters that I had before me. All right, now, and congratulations and the best of luck. Thank you, Madam President.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Laspada.
Although, yeah, I just have to thank you so much, and particularly echo Alderman Sigo Lopez's statement. As someone—the lot of us who are in this for the first two months, figuring this all out for the first time, the way you opened doors and opened relationships and helped us learn the ropes, particularly on some of the thorny development and transportation issues we've been dealing with, the rooms that you convened for us, the solutions that we worked towards, I have been so grateful, and I hope whoever comes after you brings forward the same work ethic and really the same spirit of collaboration. Thank you so much.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Dow.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Pablo, I wish you the best as you move forward in a new career path. The fact that you've been here a minute but being celebrated like you've been here 30 years is not lost upon us all, and should not be lost upon you. You've had a tremendous impact on us, and you know how to move in this—this arena and this circle. You've been an asset to the City of Chicago. God bless you.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Beal.
Thank you, Madam President. I too rise to support this resolution to my man Pablo. You know, every time I saw him, that's exactly what I would always say. I'd say, "My man Pablo." Let me just say, Pablo, I'm really, really happy for you. You have a very bright future ahead of you. You're smart, you're articulate, you're a hard worker, man, and let me just say, your star is so bright, and I'm just extremely happy for you. Best of luck. Always remember, we're here for you. Thank you.
And last but not least, the Chair recognizes Alderman Rebos.
Pablo, thank you so much for being the person that you are. You come from good stock, and you're very personable, you're—you know how to reach us, and that will be missed, and you have a good future ahead of you. Young—young man, and you're very bright, and thank you for everything that you did for us. Appreciate you.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Riley.
Thank you, Madam President. Pablo, I echo what everyone else has said. I think you've done a tremendous job. You deal with 50 very difficult personalities here every day. You've had some tough situations with a number of us, and you've always handled it with grace and professionalism, and I know you're going to do a great job in your next gig. So, congratulations. It's really been a pleasure working with you. When I interviewed you for a job in my office, I should have hired you then, but I know you're going to do great out there, and please do stay in touch.
All right. The Chair recognizes Alderman King.
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. I'm supposed to state this first. Beg leave of the body for the opportunity to add a few comments about the 1919 race riots. Myself and Alderman Irvin would like to add a few words. Sorry I missed that opportunity earlier, but I think it's—it's just too important of a commemoration to let go by. First of all, Madam President—
Hold on one second. Any objection? So ordered. Please proceed.
Thank you. First of all, I'd like to truly thank you for your leadership here, Madam President. There are so many examples in our history in Chicago of—of sanctioned racism, of violence, that need not only to be acknowledged, but we need to take steps to amend the wrongs because they've left lasting negative imprints on our city. And I appreciate the event that you're going to have on Monday and the events that are going on this Saturday, which is actually the 100th year anniversary of the 1990 race As I said, it's left a—left kind of a lasting impression on us. This event actually happened at the 31st Street Beach, where a number of us go to enjoy. As Alderman Dow pointed out, a young African-American male—he was 17 years old at the time—his name was Eugene Williams. He lost his life after—he was stoned to death by white beachgoers when he passed an imaginary line, border. And this beach is now called Margaret Burrows Beach, or 31st Beach—Street Beach and Harbor as we all know it. But that day led to a week of rioting where 38 people lost their lives. We call it the Red Summer in the United States. Chicago actually had the most deaths and injuries, where hundreds of people were injured and over 1,000 homes were lost. So, you know, I really just wanted to take a moment for us all to reflect on where we've come, why this particular point in time is actually still imprinted on our memories, probably because there was—after this incident, the police, you know, didn't seek to arrest the white man who threw stones at the black gentleman, our young boy who died, but indeed arrested black people on the scene, and it started a lot of race riots there. So, I just think it's important for us to acknowledge this time in history. It's our 100th year anniversary. As Alderman Dow indicated, there are a number of things going on on—that Saturday to commemorate this event. I know, Mayor, you're having an event on Monday to also commemorate the event, and I just again want to thank you for your leadership and for us all to think about how the race riots of 1990—1919 still impact us 100 years later. So, thank you, Madam President.
Alderman Irvin.
Thank you, Madam President. It's interesting, 100 years later, we—we're somewhat having the same conversation. We're still talking about jobs, still talking about housing, we're still talking about opportunity. While we commemorate this tragic event, we need to think about the significance of what it was about and how we can correct and fix the reasons it happened. I'm very happy to see that we are trying to make stride in the direction of equality. I'm not going to say—I don't want to say equality, I want to say equity. Equity. And let's be clear that we're looking for equity in this conversation. So, let's not forget the tragedy of the past, but let's not keep it a tragedy moving forward. Thank you.
Alderman Spazato.
Excuse me. Thank you, Madam President. Once—I just want to thank you for the opportunity for me and my colleagues to recognize Pablo. So, once again, thank you, Pablo. I'm not so sure everybody got a chance to speak that wanted to speak, but thank you very much for this opportunity to suspend the rules. And Pablo, once again, best wishes to you. God bless you.
All right. Unless there's something else, we're going to move on to committee reports. Finance, Alderman Wagasback.
Thank you, Madam President. Madam President, reporting for the City Council's Committee on Finance, which met July 24, 2019. Item number one on the agenda is an ordinance concerning the authority to enter into and execute an intergovernmental agreement with the Chicago Board of Education for the redevelopment of Philip Rogers Elementary School on the 50th Ward. The item was approved by the committee by voice vote, and if no one wishes to speak on the matter, I move to—uh, I move for concur with the committee recommendation by roll-call vote.
Kirk will call the roll.
Alderman Laspada. Alderman Hopkins. Alderman Dow. Alderman King. Alderman Hairston. Alderman Sawyer. Alderman Mitchell. Alderman Harris. Alderman Beal. Alderman Zalowski-Garza. Alderman—I heard him. Alderman Thompson. Alderman Cardness. Alderman Quinn. Alderman Burke. Alderman Lopez. Alderman Coleman. Alderman Moore. Alderman Curtis. Alderman O'Shea. Alderman Taylor. Alderman Brooken. Alderman Rodriguez. Alderman Tabara. Alderman Scott. Alderman Sigo Lopez. Alderman Maldonado. Alderman Burnett. Alderman Irvin. Alderman Talafaro. Alderman Rebos. Alderman Cardona. Alderman Wagasback.
Aye.
Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez. Alderman Austin. Alderman Ramirez Rosa. Alderman Viegas. Alderman Mitt. Alderman Spazato. Alderman Nugent. Alderman Vasquez. Alderman Napolitano. Alderman Riley. Alderman Smith. Alderman Tunny. Alderman Gardner. Alderman Kappelman. Alderman Martin. Alderman Ostroman. Alderman Haddon. Alderman Silverstein. Alderman Maldonado is an aye.
There are 49 yays, no nays. The matter is passed. Alderman Thompson on the motion to reconsider.
Madam President, motion to reconsider the vote.
All those in favor say aye. Oppose, no.
No.
Motion fails. Alderman Wagasback.
Madam President, item number two is an ordinance concerning the authority to enter into and execute an intergovernmental agreement with Illinois International Port District for the redevelopment of Butler Drive Rail and Butler Drive Road. The item was approved by the committee by voice vote. If no one wishes to speak on this matter, I move passage by the first most favorable roll-call vote on the Committee on Finance report and the corresponding— roll call vote on the Committee on Finance report and the corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Madam President, item number three is an ordinance concerning the authority to enter into and execute an intergovernmental agreement with Chicago Park District for the redevelopment of McInerney Park. The item was approved by the committee by voice vote. If no one wishes to speak on this matter, I move passage by the first most favorable roll call vote on the Committee on Finance report and the corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
No objections, so ordered.
Madam President, item number four is an ordinance concerning the authority to enter into and execute an intergovernmental agreement with the Chicago Park District for the redevelopment of Bosley Park Playground. The item was approved by the committee by voice vote, and if no one wishes to speak on this matter, I move passage by the first most favorable roll call vote on the Committee on Finance report and the corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Madam President, items five through 10 regard monthly settlements through the Law Department and will be placed on file with the clerk. If there's no objection, I ask that these, pardon me, items 11 through 13 are authorizations for the payment of various small claims against the city, denial of payments of various small claims against the city, and orders authorizing the payment of senior citizen rebate sewer claim. If there's no objection, I ask that these items be placed in the omnibus.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Madam President, item 14 consists of two orders authorizing Corporation Council to enter into and execute settlements in two different cases. Our first case is Dulisha Lee individually and as special administrator to the estate of Samira Lee deceased versus Eric Rice Truck Sales, Truck Tire Sales Incorporated and the City of Chicago. The orders, this order was approved by the committee by voice vote. If no one wishes to speak on this matter, I move passage by the first most favorable roll call vote in the Committee on Finance report and the corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objection. Sorry, Alderman Riley.
Madam President, I wish to be recorded as voting aye on the first item on the Finance agenda.
No objection.
Thank you.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Madam President, the second item is the case of Tyrone Scott versus the City of Chicago and Chicago Police Officers. This case was approved in the committee by voice vote, and if no one wishes to speak on this matter, I move passage by the first most favorable roll call vote on the Committee on Finance report and the corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Madam President, that concludes my report of the City Council Committee on Finance.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Harris.
Thank you, Madam President. For the Committee on Committees Rules, which met July 22, 2019, I have two items to report on. A proposed resolution regarding the City Council for participation in the census. One, a special committee of the City Council was created. Two, Alderman Raboyas elected as the chairman of the Special Legislative Committee on the Census, both passed committee by unanimous voice vote of the committee members present. Item two, ordinance 2019-3812 correcting the City Council Journal of Proceedings of April 10, 2019, passed by the committee by unanimous voice vote by members present. I move to concur in the recommendation of the committee by the last most favorable roll call report of the Committee on Finance and the same motion to reconsider if there are no objections.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Thank you, Madam President. That concludes my report.
Alderman Dowell.
Yes, thank you, Madam President, and members of the City Council, reporting for your Committee on the Budget and Government Operations, which held meetings on July 15 and July 22, 2019. The following items were recommended for passage by the committee. One, a substitute ordinance concerning an amendment to the Annual Appropriations Ordinance year 2019 within Fund 925 for various city departments. And two, a direct introduction from the Office of Budget and Management concerning a proposed amendment to the 2019 Annual Appropriation Ordinance. I move passage of these items by the first favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance and associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. Alderman Vegas.
Madam President, members of the City Council, reporting for the Committee on Economic Capital and Technology Development, which held a meeting on July 16, 2019. The committee has a series of reports recommending passage of the following items. Item one is an ordinance for a Class 7C tax status for property at 1725 to 1741 West 21st Street in the 25th Ward. I move passage of this item by the first favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance and associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item two is an ordinance for a Class 6B tax incentive for property located at 3900 to 3946 South Normal Avenue in the 11th Ward. Alderman Lopez wishes to be recognized to speak on this item.
Alderman Lopez.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to thank our chairman and your staff for working with the City Council Committee. At committee, I was a no because I felt that we weren't getting the answers and responses that we need, and I am pleased to report that after speaking with our chairman and hearing about changes coming forward from your administration, that we'll be addressing these tax breaks in a different manner so that we are more inclusive and cooperative. And for that, I'm happy to support it today. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Lopez. Alderman Vegas.
Madam President, I move passage of this item by the same roll call vote of the Committee on Finance and associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Madam President, items threes through nine are a series of appointments of members to the special service areas. Bania Daniel Diamond to SSA number five. Maricela Burner to SSA 28-2014. Amy Laria to SSA 29-2014. Mark Aestrope to SSA 60. Maria Jimenez to SSA 62. Robert Smith to SSA 62. And Patrick Tarpe to SSA number 62, for which I move passage by the same roll call vote of the Committee on Finance and associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Madam President, item 10 has been held in committee. This concludes my report.
Thank you. Alderman Smith.
Thank you. Madam President, members of the City Council, on behalf of the City Council Committee on Ethics and Government Oversight, which held a meeting on July 17, 2019, the committee considered and recommended passage of one item, a substitute ordinance amending chapters 2-56 to 2-156 of the Municipal Code of Chicago Regarding Government Ethics. If no one wishes to speak on this matter, I move passage of this ordinance by the first favorable roll call vote of the, excuse me? I, if no, if no one wishes to speak on this matter, I move passage of this ordinance by the first favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance and associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Thank you very much. That concludes my report.
And I'd like to personally thank Chairman Smith, Vice Chair Martin, and all the members for the passage of this important ordinance. Thank you very much. Next is Alderman Sawyer.
Thank you, Madam President, and members of the City Council, reporting on the Committee on Health Human Relations for which a meeting was held July 18, 2019. I hereby recommend that the following resolution do hereby pass. A call for condemnation on other states legislative efforts to diminish women's reproductive rights granted under Roe versus Wade. If no one wants to speak on the matter, and with the exception of Alderman Cardona, Lasbada, Raboyas, and Napolitano, I move to apply the first most favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance and associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider this item.
Hearing no objection, so ordered.
This concludes my report.
Thank you. Alderman Osterman, Housing.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the City Council, reporting for your Committee on Housing and Real Estate, which held a meeting on July 17, 2019. The committee has a series of reports recommending passage for the following items. Items two, three, four are ordinances approving lease agreements at 1544-1558 South Lawndale in the 24th Ward, 3800-3804 West Chicago Avenue, 3812 West Chicago Avenue in the 27th Ward, and 3626 West Ogden, 3637-3631, I'm sorry, 3641 West Ogden, and 2118-2126 South Millard, and 2119-2125 in South Lawndale in the 24th Ward. I move passage of these items by the first favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Items five, six, seven, and eight are ordinance for the sale of city-owned property at 212 North Keystone Avenue in the 28th Ward, 4430 South Shields in the 3rd Ward, 2012 South Canalport in the 11th Ward, 5882 South Halsted, 1052-1056 West 59th Street, 1114-1120 West 59th Street, and 5800 South Ada in the 16th Ward. I move passage for these items on the same roll call vote as Committee on Finance, first vote on the Committee on Finance and associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item number nine is in agreement with Dearborn Real Estate Board, DBA, Dearborn Realist Board, who administer the Community Receiver Training Program utilizing Affordable Housing Opportunity Funds, for which I move the passage of the same roll call of the committee, vote of the Committee on Finance and associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Items 10, 12, and 11 are ordinance for the sale of city-owned property at 2021-2023 West Washington Boulevard in the 27th Ward, 2019 West Washington Boulevard in the 27th Ward, and 434-436 East 46th Street, 46th Place in the 3rd Ward, which I move passage by the same roll call vote of the Committee on Finance and associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
So ordered.
This concludes my report.
Alderman Mitts, Committee on License and Consumer Protection.
Thank you, and good morning, Madam President. Members of the City Council, I'm reporting for the Committee on License and Consumer Protection. We held a meeting on June 26, 2019 to consider the following ordinance. 02019-3923 was an ordinance prohibiting impelling and pushing of the 4th Ward. 11 ordinance regarding more returnees in various wards, the 2nd, the 17th, the 26th, 28th, 34th, 35th, 37th, and the 50th Ward. These recommendations were concurred in by a voice vote of the members of the License Committee on June 29, 2019. Madam President, I move that the City Council concur in the recommendation of the License Committee by the same roll call vote as item number one on the Committee on Finance and the same unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Committee on Pedestrian Traffic Safety, Alderman Burnett.
Thank you very much, Madam President, reporting for your Committee on Pedestrian and Traffic Safety for which a meeting was held on Thursday, July 11, 2019. Before the committee, there were 340 items. There were 321 routine items that passed and 19 routine traffic items that did not pass. There was one substitute ordinance introduced by 42nd Ward Alderman Brendan Riley, co-sponsored by 2nd Ward Alderman Brian Hopkins, an amendment of Municipal Code, Section 9-4-010, to prohibit drifting and drag racing of vehicles on the public way. There were two substitute ordinance introduced by 13th Ward Alderman Marty Quinn. The first substitute ordinance was an amendment of Municipal Code, Section 3-56-050, by further regulating fees on automobile classification. The second substitute ordinance was an amendment of parking meters on South Major Avenue. If there's no objections, I move for the passage of these ordinances in the omnibus. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. So ordered. Alderman Brookings, Committee on Transportation and Public Way.
Thank you, Madam President, reporting for your Committee on Transportation and Public Way, a meeting which was held on July 17. The following ordinances were passed by a majority of the members present. Pages 2 through 77 include 833 ordinances for grants of privilege introduced by local aldermen from wards 1 through 6, 8 through 15, and 17 through 50. Pages 78 through 81 include 68 ordinances for canopies introduced by local aldermen from wards 1 through 5, 10, 12, 13, 15, 19, 22, 25, 27, 31 to 33, 37, 39, 40, 42 to 45, 47, 48, and 50. And pursuant to Rule 14, Alderman Tunny abstains from voting on item 02019-4727 on page 81. Pages 82 through 92 include 123 ordinances for sidewalk cafes introduced by local aldermen from wards 1 through 4, 8, 10, 11, 22, 25 through 27, 30, 32, 33, 35, 38, 39, 40, and 42 through 50. Pages 93 through 98 include 46 ordinances for miscellaneous items introduced by local aldermen in ward 1, 2, 4, 7, 10, 12, 27 through 29, 32, 36, 39, 42 through 44, 46 through 48, and 50. On page 99, item one is an amendment to taxi cab stand number 799 located in the 42nd Ward. Page 100, item one is a subdivision located in the 11th Ward. And page 101 includes two dedication ordinances located in the 28th and 42nd Ward. If there are no objections, I move the passage of these items by the last most favorable roll call item on the Committee on Finance and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. Thank you, Alderman.
Thank you. That concludes my report.
Alderman Garza, I understand that you have an item that you want to discuss.
Oh, yes, Madam President, I do. I forgot. Thank you very much.
Alderman Garza, I apologize. One moment, if you may. Alderman Irvin.
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to rise, just wanted to recognize a group of young men. I know we're going to probably spend a lot of time on this Fair Work Week ordinance, but I wanted to recognize them before they had to leave. This is a group of young men from West Garfield Park from the Mayawfa Redemption Project led by Reverend Marshall Hatch Jr., and who has been seriously working with young men who've had some challenging backgrounds, but is working to rehabilitate them in the spirit of the Mayawfa, if you may not know, represents the Middle Passage from Africa here to the United States. We just wanted to recognize these young men for the work that they're doing in the West Garfield Park community. The one standing right in the front. Thank you.
Thank you all for being here. All right. Chairman Garza.
Thank you, Madam President, reporting for the Committee on Workforce Development. There was one very important item on the agenda, an amendment of the Municipal Code by adding new chapter 1-25 entitled Chicago Fair Work Week Ordinance. 02019-3928, the ordinance passed unanimously in committee. If there is no one that would like to speak to this, I move due passage by the first most favorable roll call vote on the Committee on Finance, report on the corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider. Thank you, Madam President. This concludes my report for the Committee on Workforce Development. Oh, I'm sorry. Do you want to speak on this?
I do. But let me grant your motion first. I want to express my gratitude as counsel for supporting this landmark legislation, which is the most expansive in the nation. Thanks to the leadership of this chamber, particularly Alderman Garza, workers in Chicago are now guaranteed fair working conditions, encompassing new industries and providing relief to tens of thousands of working families as they seek to maximize their income... to tens of thousands of working families as they seek to maximize their income and care for their families. I also want to acknowledge the coalition of business, labor groups, and other organizations for their hard work over two and a half plus years and in partnership over these last two and a half months in arriving at a solution that was both beneficial to our city's employees and employers. In passing this legislation, I can't help but think of my own mother, growing up as she struggled to navigate the uncertainty of not knowing when she'd be working as a healthcare aide. Now employees will have predictable pay, the right to decline schedule changes, choice of additional work hours when available, and the right to rest and request a flexible working arrangement. Measures that are truly transformative to the lives of parents taking care of their children, adults serving as caretakers for older relatives, students seeking an education, families making a budget every month, and the list goes on and on. This ordinance marks a key step in our mission to work together to strengthen conditions for Chicago's working families and communities, ensuring we continue to move Chicago forward as one city that is more prosperous and equitable for every resident. And I also have to say, I want to say thank you to my team, which was large, worked hard through a lot of difficulty, and brought it home. So thank you so much, everyone.
Yes, Madam President, I would like to say something. The past four weeks have been trying, difficult, and long, but I too feel that this has been one of the most transparent, open, collaborative processes that I've ever seen taken place in City Council. I commend the work that we've all done together, and this is what good government looks like. I'm very proud of my colleagues in my committee for voting this out of committee unanimously. And I think this ordinance is, well, I know this ordinance is going to protect hundreds of thousands of workers, and we've just changed the lives of many people. So for that, I'm very proud of everyone. And I want to make clear that what I submitted on May 29 is not what passed. It was a substitute ordinance. And if no one else would like to speak to this, that concludes my report on the Committee on Workforce Development.
Alderman Rodriguez.
You know, this bill is definitely going to change the lives. And in my vast experience here on the council, the many weeks that I've been here, you know, this is a real learning experience. And it was an experience in which I got to see various folks at the table, you and your leadership mayor, your staff. But I labor the business community, but I've got to say that I'm going to reserve my warmest heartfelt thanks and appreciation for the hard work, dedication, round-the-clock work for our Chairman Sue Garza. Give her a round of applause.
So Mayor, as chief co-sponsor of this bill and as one of your first efforts, we've got a high bar now. Let's keep on going.
Thank you. Alderman Tunny.
President, and as Chairman Garza said, this was not the ordinance that was introduced in May. I too have been working on this ordinance for two and a half years and was not an early supporter of it. But we did hear from so many about, in some respects, the unsavory activities of employers and the abuse of employees. I too learned a lot during this process. But as we evolved, as Chairman Garza said, over the last four weeks, nonstop, and thank God the city isn't applicable on this ordinance because the IGA staff did not have the right to rest, I don't think, for the 12-hour period or 11, whatever we agreed upon at the end. But at the end of the day, Alderman Beal said it as good as anybody, all sides are not happy. There's a two-year study period to see what we did right and what we did better. I just wanted to say that while our mayor's mother and her story resonates with all Chicagoans, what also resonates is a concern for safety net hospitals and hospitals in general. So as the mayor said, this is the most expansive in the country and the first municipality to include hospitals. I do want to say that we really need to take a serious look at this because there are safety net hospitals that are sole employer or the sole safety net for many, many parts of our city. So we've got to take a real close look at how this is. I know there's a waiting period for this, but we heard loud and clear that we cannot afford to be closing safety net hospitals. And while there's, you know, most hospitals are not-for-profits, and at the end of the day, I know we're cynical about salaries of some of these CEOs and some of the entry-level workers. We'll find the right solution as we always do. I do want to make sure and commend the mayor because of her leadership of making sure that she took all sides into this very important ordinance, that we hope we got it right. And, you know, I grew up in the city saying this city is good for business. You can't do business in Chicago, you can't do business. That was under a certain daily, not for them. But I think that we have to make sure that our city is open for businesses and that 95, if not 99% of employers try to do the right thing. I'll just say 95, not 90. And we, this ordinance is really far-reaching, and I hope to take a serious eye and make sure that we are open for employers, employees, workers of all sorts, from the CEO to the entry-level worker. I was very much involved with this process, and I'm comfortable where we're at, and I really wanted to publicly thank your leadership on this. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman. Let me just add and pick up on, I'm sorry, go ahead, Alderman Osterman. I'm sorry, Campbellman. Pardon me.
We're neighbors. In 2012, I went to a three-week program at Harvard Kennedy School of Government, and legislators from all over the world attended that. And what we learned is the mark of a good legislator is the legislator's ability to negotiate, especially negotiations for when, when, or where both sides lose a little bit. And these days, it's especially hard, especially coming from the White House where polarization is celebrated. This is a time where we have to all come together and negotiate. This is one city with 50 wards, and with all of us working together, we can make great things happen, especially with this particular ordinance. And thank you, Alderman Sue Garza, and thank you, Mayor Lightfoot.
And now Alderman Osterman.
Madam President, I want to commend you on pushing this forward. Significant effort that's going to help working-class residents of Chicago. I want to commend Sue Garza. I don't know that I've seen her get choked up before, but this is a significant ordinance that's going to affect many, many Chicagoans in every single neighborhood. It also is not going to hurt small businesses that we desperately need to employ people. I think that's also something that Alderman Tunny, as a business owner himself, will continue to hark on, but we need employers, those people that invest their own money and take a risk in our city to employ people. I think all of us are in this together. So I think today's a historic step for our city. We have to watch how this goes, and we've got to continue to work to create jobs in every corner of Chicago. Thank you.
Alderman Carlos Rosa.
Much, Madam President. I do rise to support this ordinance, commend you for your leadership, and commend Chairwoman Garza for her leadership on this, and to commend the workers of Chicago that have been fighting so hard to make this legislation a reality. It was in May 1 of 1886 that 20,000 workers took to Michigan Avenue to demand eight hours a day with no cut-in, because they wanted freedom. They wanted to be able to have eight hours of work, eight hours to sleep, and eight hours to do what they, that they could have control over the time that they would spend with their families, for the time that they would dedicate their hobbies, the leisure, to do the important housework they needed to get done. I remember not too long ago, at the beginning of this council, when our mayor presented us with an advanced schedule of all the city council meetings coming up for the rest of the year, we stood up in a standing ovation. And that's because advance notice and fair scheduling is a good thing. And so it is a great thing that we are doing today, extending that same right, extending that same freedom, that same security to hundreds of thousands of workers across the city of Chicago, and we should all be very proud to continue the work of this great city, a union. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Thompson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I too rise and support of this. I want to congratulate our Chair, Alderman Sue Garza, for a job well done, listening to both sides and balancing interests of all parties. I congratulate all those who were involved with this and echo what Alderman Tunny said in terms of balancing the workers' rights as well as being conducive to business, making sure that we continue to build on momentum we've had over the last number of years as being the leader of corporate relocations coming to Chicago. We have the talent that comes here, graduates that come here, as well as the workers, fine workforce, and working with our city colleges to train our residents for the next generation. I represent the Stockyards Industrial Park, which is a large employer, and I think as we move forward, like demonstrated with this ordinance, we need to listen to one another, be able to be hearing what we're, what both sides are saying, make sure that we continue to be a place for businesses to relocate and to do business and do right while doing well. Thank you.
Alderman Lasbada.
Very grateful for this opportunity to stand in recognition and support of this ordinance. I think it recognizes something very simple but striking, that people who care for others professionally have people that they care for. You know, they need the stability to be able to do in their homes what they do so well in their workplace. And I see a lot of noble resumes in this council chamber, but if you have a ignoble resume like mine that includes Burger King and Barnes &amp; Noble and staffing agencies, you know what it looks like, what it feels like to show up on Saturday, try to figure out if you're working on Sunday. So I'm glad, and I think about the friends of mine who will benefit directly from this ordinance. I'm grateful that we're asking today. Thank you.
Alderman Sicto Lozrez.
Thank you, Mayor. I also wanted to commend you, Mayor and Alderman Sue Garza, Mike Rodriguez, for pushing forward this legislation and making sure that we make a priority to represent our working-class community. Is, hopefully, this is a blueprint of how we conduct discussions and future bills. I've seen the hard work of the sponsors, especially Alderman Sue Garza, bringing the different sectors together, the private sector, so the nonprofit sector, labor, and obviously the legislators, to make sure that we push forward bills that address the issues in our community, so that we create jobs that also respect for our workers, so flex, having the flexibility, but also the respect for the jobs that they do to make sure they have time also with their families and to actually conduct their lives. So I want to just commend you, and hopefully this is the beginning for a new day for the city. There's other legislation coming up, and I hope this is a good blueprint of what we can achieve when we work together. So thank you again.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderwoman Rodriguez Sanchez.
Madam President, I just want to say thank you to everybody that worked to make this happen, but particularly, I want to thank the workers that organized to make these demands, and I want to acknowledge the leadership of a very strong woman that is becoming a role model. Thank you, Sue Garza, for doing this work. It's important work, it's basic. I think that everybody should have the right to be able to plan their lives in advance. It will contribute to the health of the people, to the mental health, to the physical health, and the health of the families. So this is a really important thing, a really basic thing, and I'm really glad that we are being, we're being able to achieve this.
Alderman Nuegas Beck.
Thank you, Madam President. I just also want to extend congratulations to Alderwoman Slavski Garza, who worked very hard over the last month, actually a couple of years on this issue. And also want to say thank you to you and Alderman Tunny or Chairman Tunny for listening. I know that these conversations went back a long time, and we should also give thanks to former Chairman Pat O'Connor, who sat both sides at the table, really started talking through these issues, looking at them one by one, and helping us walk through those particular problems with it on each side. So I think this was a fantastic way to create an ordinance that will benefit the workforce of our city, but also make sure that we're protecting those who are creating these businesses and continue to work together. But kudos to Alderwoman Slavski Garza for really pulling this together at the end, and you for listening very closely to everyone. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Alderman Cardenas.
Thank you, Madam President. I want to congratulate you and also my colleague Alderman Sue Garza for her tremendous effort and work. And not to be remiss, if I don't thank UFCW and its representative Zach for years of advocacy of this particular issue. Office of Labor Standards has been also approved, and I would imagine they'll be working alongside to make sure that this is implemented and everybody abides by the rules. Madam President, you talked about legislating more in this body, and that's exactly what's happening in your leadership. This is a check on that commitment, and thank you for that. More than ever, I've never seen this council churn out more important legislation for the people of the city, and it's all thanks to you. Thank you.
Alderman Irvin.
Thank you, Madam President. This ordinance has definitely taken some twists and some turns during the time it started, two and a half years ago. I know that at the end of the day, the object was to make life better for low-income wage earners. I think that this goal has been achieved through this ordinance, however, as any ordinance, it goes through its iterations and changes. One thing, and I'm glad we do have a provision to come back and revisit this, because I think we need to study the effects on both the employers and the employees. As we continue to go through this and we continue to look at this, we just need to make sure that this is, this is going to do what we intend for it to do. Number one, is it help, help to lift some of our low-wage earners out of desperate situations. And I go back to what Alderman Lasbada stated about showing up on Friday to figure out if he's got to work on Saturday. That's not fair to our workers. And again, as a state that you heard yesterday, this is going to create better planning for everybody. It's nice to know when you can spend time with your family, and we hope that our employers get an opportunity to study their trends, see what's going on, and better plan their workforce versus trying to figure it out on the fly the day before or walking into the shift. Being, living on the on-call life, I know we live in on-call life, but that's what we signed up for, and we expect that. But to raise, to deal with the family, to raise a family, especially for some of our young ladies that are in this predicament, is very tough on them to make these arrangements for childcare and do these other things, to find out that you're about to lose eight hours or 12 hours of pay, is a bit, is a bit of a challenge. So glad that we were able to find a resolution on this issue, and as we study this over the next two years, hopefully we can make some more adjustments and actually bring more families into this predicament. I know we have some exemptions, however, I think if we can make all of our families in this city, give them the same luxuries, I think that would be best for our communities. Thank you.
Alderman King.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to briefly say, this is a great ordinance for working people, for the city of Chicago. I want to thank my colleague Alderman Garza for her leadership, and Mayor, for your leadership in just the process. I think process is really important, and so the fight for 15 should be pretty easy for 2021, right? All right, thank you.
Before we close out this discussion, I just want to touch on a couple of points that some have raised. Alderman Tunny raised the question of safety net hospitals. We spent a lot of time talking to them and making sure that we were doing everything possible to not adversely impact them. Based on my discussions with some of the leaders, their biggest issue is Medicaid reimbursement, and I have committed to working with them to make sure that it doesn't take another 15 years for them to get an increase in Medicaid reimbursement rates. So that's something I'm committed to. I also want to be clear, yes, this is intended to make sure that we are taking care of our workers so that they are fairly treated in the workplace, but as many of you have indicated, we have to be about we have to be about growth in this city, and growth includes making sure that our businesses are able to function. I'm going to credit Alderman Irvin, but it may have been the brainchild of others. We have a look-back period and a review. It's going to be a tough lift for Business Affairs and Consumer Protection, but we are committed to making sure that we get this right. We've built in to the ordinance the ability to monitor what's happening, both from the worker's perspective, but also from the business perspective. We're going to build data analytics so we can get that work done, and we'll be reporting back to this body on where we are once this legislation goes into effect. But again, Alderman Garza, kudos to you, can't say enough about your incredible leadership and patience. I want to thank our friends in organized labor. I want to thank the business community, and I want to thank all of you. This was a big, tough lift. This is something that we've not done before, I think, as a city. We're taking on an enormous mandate that we have to build infrastructure in order to be able to, to handle, but we'll get it done because this is what's right for our city. So thank you all again.
Thank you, Madam President. So, Madam President, I'd like to renew my motion, and I move passage by the first most favorable roll call vote on the Committee on Finance report and the corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objection. Alderman Brookins, do you want to be heard on this? Okay. Hearing no objection, so ordered.
Thank you, Madam President. President, this concludes my report on the Committee on Workforce Development. Woo! Madam President, may I approach the bench?
You may. Uh-oh.
I can't give you a bottle of champagne, but I'm going to give you a bottle of Southside Hot Sauce.
Thank you, Madam President. I, I'd like to temporarily suspend, temporarily suspend the rules just to acknowledge the students from after school matters, curious legal minds who might be sleeping sitting up in the gallery, but they are a great bunch of kids, and I just wanted to recognize them before they have to catch their bus. Thank you.
Alderman Moore, briefly.
While he's doing that, to piggyback on his, we have a lot of our interns here, and I know other people may have their interns here. I have my interns up in the gallery if they would stand up, and any other interns here from One Time Chicago. Mayor, you've done a great job with that, and I appreciate all of them for being here.
Thank you. Alderman Tunny, Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a series of reports. We actually had four meetings at our last city council meeting, and I'll start with a series of reports. Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards, for which a meeting was held on April 23, 2019, the following ordinances and orders were passed by a majority of the members present. Page one contains two map amendments in the first ward. I hereby move passage of these items by the last most favorable vote of the Finance Committee report and associated motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objection, so ordered.
Next, presenting a series of reports for your Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards, for which a meeting was held on June 25. The following ordinances and orders were passed by a majority of the members present. Page one contains one aldermanic map amendment in the 11th ward. Pages one through 11 contain various map amendments in the first, second, 20th, 25th, 26th, 27th, 30th, 31st, 32th, 36th, 40th, 42th, 43th, 44th, 45th, and the 49th wards. Page 11 contains the historical landmark designation for the Rainbow Pylons and Legacy Walk located at 3244 through 3710 North Halsted and 3243 through 37 North Halsted in the 44th and 46th wards. I'm going to beg the indulgence of my colleagues by saying a few words on the landmark Rainbow Pylons. We do, in the audience here, I believe Victor Salvo is here, but I wanted to say the designation will make the Legacy Walk and the Rainbow Pylon streetscape the only multi-acre site in the world to be declared a landmark because of its importance to the LGBT people. Again, Victor is here, Lori Cannon is here, Rick Garcia is here. I want to thank them, the Legacy Board, the North Halsted Business Alliance, for their leadership and stewardship on the monument, on these monuments. And on behalf of Alderman Kappelman and I, we want to thank the Landmarks Division, Mayor Emanuel, and of course you, Mayor Lightfoot, for your strong support in seeing this cross the finish line. So, thank you on that.
And I just want to recognize, your guests are here right behind you, Alderman Tunny.
Oh, I don't recognize them, Mayor. Only four years of recognizing them, actually.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Thank you. All right. Make sure, okay. Page 12 contains various large signs over 100 square feet in area 24 feet above grade in the 1st, 11th, 28th, 32nd, 39th, 41st, 42nd, 44th, and 50th wards. I hereby move passage of these items by the last most favorable roll call, the Finance Committee report and associated motion to reconsider. Presenting a series of, presenting a series of reports for your Committee on Zoning, Landmark, and Building Standards, for which a meeting was held on July 9. The following ordinances and orders were passed by a majority of members present. Page one contains one mayoral text amendment of municipal code titles 2, 4, 5, 7, 13, 14A, 14B, 14C, 14E, 14R, and 15 regarding technical corrections related to Chicago construction and building codes. Page one through seven contain various map amendments in the first, second, 10th, 11th, 12th, 26th, 27th, 29th, 32nd, 36th, 39th, and 48th wards. Page seven contains various large signs over 100 square feet in area, 24 feet above grade, those being in the 21st, 42nd, and 47th wards. I hereby move passage of these items by the last most favorable vote of the Finance Committee report and associated motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objection, so ordered.
Finally, presenting a series of reports for your Committee on Zoning, Landmark, and Building Standards, which held a meeting on July 23, 2019, the following ordinances and orders were passed by a majority of members present. Page one through six contain various map amendments in the first, second, 11th, 21st, 24th, 25th, 26th, 27th, 29th, 30th, 33rd, 35th, 42nd, 46th, and 47th wards. Page seven contains various large signs over 100 square feet in area, 24 feet above grade in the 4th, 11th, and 37th wards. I hereby move passage of these items by the last most favorable roll call vote of the Finance Committee and associated motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objection, so ordered.
Mayor, I want to thank my committee members for their patience. It was a busy month, and that concludes my reports.
Thank you, sir. Next is matters on the agreed calendar. Alderman Harris.
Thank you, Madam President. I have received from the Clerk's office a listing of items proposed for the agreed calendar consisting of congratulatory, commemorative, and memorial resolutions offered by Alderman Dow, King, Sawyer, Harris, Thompson, Quinn, Alderman Burp, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Lopez. I'm telling you, Alderman Moore, Alderman Curtis, Scott, Scott, Dow, King, Maldonado, Rorores, Alderman Austin, Alderman Nugent, Alderman Riley, Smith, Alderman Osterman. I move in the, the passage of the agreed calendar, Madam President.
Hearing no, Alderman Moore, do you wish to be heard?
Yes. Thank you, Madam President. And one of those resolutions, I'll be very short, Madam President, was for Brother Manir Mohammed, who would crow the Coalition of the Remembrance of Elijah Muhammad, but what he was greatly known for was his television show, having many elected officials on there. But I just want to publicly thank you, Mayor, for putting together the resolution for him attending that service and recognizing his great works in this city. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I renew my motion to pass the agreed calendar.
Hearing no objection, so ordered.
Thank you.
New business. The clerk will call the wards, beginning with the 50th.
Flames, free permits, license, fee exemptions, refer to the Committee on Finance. Zoning amendments, refer to the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Traffic regulations, traffic control signals and traffic signs, refer to the Committee on Pedestrian and Traffic Safety. Grants of privilege on and over the public way, refer to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Exemption from physical barrier requirement for commercial driveway alley access for parking facilities, which are referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alderman Headen has opposed a proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code section 4-60-023 to allow additional package goods licenses on portions of West Devon Avenue, which is referred to Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Alderman Martin has proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code section 7-38-117 by establishing mobile food vehicle stand at 3420 North Plinah Street, which is referred to Committee on Pedestrian and Traffic Safety. Alderman Tunny has proposed orders for the issue of permits for signed signboards, which are referred to Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alderman Tunny also has a proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code section 4-60-023 to allow additional package goods licenses on portion of West Belmont Avenue, which is referred to Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Alderman Smith and Alderman Tunny have proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code section 9-64-090 to establish not-for-profit organization one-day residential parking permit pilot program for residential permit parking zones 142, 143, and 383, which is referred to Committee on Pedestrian and Traffic Safety. Alderman Smith has proposed ordinance for an historical landmark fee waiver for the property at 227 West Menominee Street, which is referred to Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alderman Napolitano has proposed ordinance for the issue of permits for signed signboards at 11601 West Tuie Avenue, which is referred to Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alderman Spazato has proposed orders for the issue of permits for signed signboards, which are referred to Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alderman Spazato also has proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code section 4-60-022 to allow additional alcoholic liquor licenses on portion of West Belmont Avenue, which is referred to Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Alderman Miss has proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code section 4-60-022 to allow additional alcoholic liquor licenses on portion of West Chicago Avenue, which is referred to Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez and others have proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code Title I, Chapter 8, by adding a new section 1-8-120, commemorating and promoting public awareness of indigenous peoples, which is referred to Committee on the Budget and Government Operations. Alderman, Alderman Wagasback and Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez have proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code section 4-60-022 to allow additional alcoholic liquor licenses on portion of West Diversey Avenue, which is referred to Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. I apologize, which is referred to Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Alderman Wagasback has proposed order for the issue of permits for signed signboards at 2647 North Clyburn Avenue, which is referred to Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alderman Wagasback also has a proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code section 10-28-031 to prohibit placement of fence or landscaped element within two feet of curbs, which is referred to Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alderman Telefiero has proposed resolution to call for hearings on the Chicago Police Department's murder clearance rate, which is referred to Committee on Public Safety. Alderman Telefiero also has a proposed resolution to call for hearings on the Chicago Police Department's classification of individuals as gang members and maintenance of gang database, which is referred to Committee on Public Safety. Alderman Burnett has proposed ordinance for release of restrictive use covenant regarding vacation of public alley within area bounded by West Washington Boulevard, North Bishop Street, West Madison Street, and North Ogden Avenue, which is referred to Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alderman Burnett also has a proposed order for the issue of permits for signed signboards at 333 North Green Street, which is referred to Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alderman Maldonado and others have proposed resolution for submission of a public question by referendum to Chicago voters at February 26, 2019, at, at the referendum question to voters of the city of Chicago, proposing an increase in the Chicago real estate transfer tax for purposes of providing resources for affordable housing and services to combat homelessness, which is referred to Committee on Finance. Alderman Maldonado has proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code section 17-10-0101 to establish a pilot program in the 26th ward to further regulate parking and loading standards for existing residential buildings or residential uses, which is referred to Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alderman Sichio Lopez has a proposed order for the issue of permits for signed signboards, which are referred to Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alderman Sichio Lopez also has proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code section 4-60-050 by further regulating prohibited acts of residential real estate developers, which is referred to Committee on Housing and Real Estate. Alderman Brookins has proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code section 4-60-022 and 4-60-023, which disallow additional alcoholic liquor and package goods licenses on portions of various public ways, which is referred to Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Alderman O'Shea has proposed resolution for submission of a public question by referendum to the voters of the city of Chicago, proposing an increase in the city of Chicago real estate transfer tax to meet cities' funding obligations concerning police and fire annuity and benefit funds, which is referred to Committee on Committees and Rules. Alderman O'Shea has a proposed order for the historical landmark fee waiver for the property at 10244 South Longwood Drive, which is referred to Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alderman O'Shea also has proposed orders for amendment of municipal code section 3-33-030 concerning allocation of portion of property transfer tax to fund Fireman's Annuity and Benefit Fund of Chicago, Policeman's Annuity and Benefit Fund of Chicago, Municipal Employees' Annuity and Benefit Fund of Chicago, and Laborers and Retirement Board Annuity and Benefit Fund of Chicago, which is referred to Committee on Finance. Alderman Curtis has proposed ordinance for an honorary street designation as Honorary Bishop George W.C. Walker Senior Boulevard, which is referred to Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alderman Lopez and others have proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code Chapter 2-92 by adding a new section 2-92-583 to prohibit contractors and subcontractors who assist in enforcement of federal civil immigration law from doing business with city, which is referred to Committee on Contracting Oversight and Equity. Alderman Lopez and others also have proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code section 2-8-041, to prohibit outside employment for aldermen, which is referred to Committee on Ethics and Government Oversight. Alderman Lopez and others also have proposed resolution calling for the Commissioner of the Department of Planning and Development to require applicants for city-owned land sales, land use agreements, and land swaps within greater Inglewood community to obtain letter of local aldermanic support before submitting any applications, which is referred to Committee on Housing and Real Estate. Alderman Lopez has proposed order for the issue of permits for signed signboards at 5122 South Archer Avenue, which is referred to Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alderman Lopez also has a proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code section 4-60-024 and section 4-60-130 concerning new regulations, concerning regulations for new liquor license premises and public awareness, which is referred to Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Alderman Lopez also has a proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code section 4-384-020 further regulate operation of animal shelters, which is referred to Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Alderman Lopez also has a proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code section 4-384-015 to regulate pet lease and finance agreements, which is referred to Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Alderman Harris has proposed order for amendment of municipal code section 4-60-023, which disallow additional package goods licenses on portion of East 79th Street, which is referred to Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Alderman Sawyer and Alderman Rodriguez have proposed resolution to call for officials and agents of Immigration and Customs Enforcement to cease mass deportation of immigration fam, of immigrant families, which is referred to Committee on Health and Human Relations.
No, she's ahead of you. I know the difference.
I would like to present, is it me?
Yes.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to present a motion to suspend the rule.
I know the difference.
I would like to present...Is it me?
Yes.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to present a motion to suspend the rules, to make a few remarks in solidarity with the people of Puerto Rico.
Hearing no objection, briefly, please.
As many of you know, Puerto Ricans are at the moment fighting to oust the current governor. There was a massive strike last Wednesday where a million people came out to demand that the governor resigns. The governor of Puerto Rico has been accused of corruption. There is a transcript of eight hundred and eighty-nine pages of a chat, an encrypted chat, where he makes homophobic, misogynist, and horrible remarks and threats to opponents. The people of Puerto Rico are demanding his resignation, and impeachment process has already started. He has refused to resign. I wanted to acknowledge the fight of the people of Puerto Rico. I tried to present a resolution, but the parliamentary process doesn't provide for it right now. But I wanted to make an acknowledgement of the people of Puerto Rico, how they're bravely fighting, and hoping that the rest of my colleagues also stand in solidarity with my people. Thank you.
Thank you. And Alderman, just to be clear, this refers to...Bucks. Just to be clear, this refers to a resolution that's going to be referred to committee. Thank you. Alderman, Mike Rodriguez.
All right, I got a...We got a little confused there. Thank you, Madam President. I wanted to thank Alderman Sawyer for his wonderful idea to condemn the recent ICE raids that have been announced by our president. There is a resolution that he and I have worked on over the last several days and are presenting today that will be referred to the Human Relations Committee. I'd just like to say that on July eighteenth, three female children ages nine, ten, and thirteen, all of whom are U.S. citizens by birthright, were detained at O'Hare International Airport by U.S. Customs and Border Protection shortly after arrival from Mexico for the apparent purpose of luring their parents to the airport. This is unconscionable. This is ridiculous, and I think as a city council, we should not stand for this. I'm looking forward to our hearings moving forward. Thank you, Alderman Sawyer, for presenting this to me and for us to work on this issue. Congresswoman Jan Schakowsky stated that this was essentially kidnapping, and we should not allow for this in our city and in our nation. Citizen veterans, legal permanent residents can be deported despite their service to this nation. The opaque, capricious, and arbitrary immigration policies that have led to these situations must be challenged by all citizens of goodwill. In this nation of immigrants, such unconscionable conduct is inexcusable. I look forward to further conversation on this. Thank you, Mayor.
Let me just add, let me just add that I became aware of this issue on that Friday and spoke directly with the head of Border Patrol at the airport, who tried to give me a little bit of a song and dance, that the language that was in a letter that was presented by the lawyer of the mother wasn't sufficient, and he wouldn't give me a straight answer on what was necessary. I expressed to him my deep displeasure with his conduct, and I think about a half an hour later, the children are reunited with their mother. We're not going to tolerate this in Chicago.
Thank you, Mayor. And I'd also like to say that today, Alderman Ramirez Rosa and I introduced language to amend our welcoming city ordinance that is much in line with what we're talking about here. Thirty-two signatures. Thank you to my colleagues for signing on to that effort as well. We look forward to amending the ordinance as well.
Thank you. Alderman Mitchell for approval of the Journal. Oh, I apologize. We're still on new business. Alderman Dow, briefly.
Yes, this will be brief. I ask to suspend the rules to introduce to the body the college interns that are here working with commed during the summer if they will stand.
They are up in the balcony, and we welcome you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
You can resume, please.
Alman Harris today has proposed orders for the issuing of permits for signed sign boards, which are referred to Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alman King has proposed orders for the issuing of permits for signed sign boards, which are referred to Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alman Dow has a proposed order for the issuing of permits for...issuance of permits for signed sign boards at fifteen fifty South State Street, which is referred to Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alman Dow also has a proposed order for the historical landmark fee waiver for the property at twenty-four oh one South Gwabash Avenue, which is referred to Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alman Hopkins and others have proposed orders for amendment of municipal code Title thirteen by creating a new Chapter thirteen dash one fifty entitled "Bird Friendly Design," which is referred to Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alman Laspada has a proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code section four dash sixty dash zero twenty-two to allow additional alcoholic liquor licenses on portion of Northwestern Avenue, which is referred to Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Alman Gardner has a proposed ordinance...order for the issuing of permits for signed sign boards at fifty-three twenty-two North Alston Avenue, which is referred to Committee on Zoning. Alman Riley has...and others have a proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code section nine dash eighty dash zero ninety-five concerning excessive standing of diesel-powered vehicles with engines running, which is referred to Committee on Environment. Alman Riley also has proposed orders for the issuing of permits for signed sign boards, which are referred to Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alman Riley also has a proposed order for amendment of municipal code Chapter eighteen dash eleven by adding new section eighteen dash eleven dash eleven oh six concerning accessible parking spaces in multi-unit residency...residential occupancies, which is referred to Committee on Pedestrian and Traffic Safety. Alman Vasquez and others have a proposed order to call for the commission of a pilot program concerning CIPP-lined water main restoration, which is referred to Committee on Environmental Protection and Energy. Alman Vegas has a proposed resolution to call for hearings on increased diversity among corporate boards and leadership, which is referred to Committee on Economic, Capital, and Technology Development. Alman Vegas and others have proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code Chapter two dash ninety-two to further regulate contract and bond executions, which is referred to Committee on Finance. Alman Ramirez Rosa has proposed resolution to call for hearings on assessment formula and model measuring working-class Chicagoans having equitable property tax system that does not fuel displacement, which is referred to Committee on Finance. Alman Ramirez Rosa and others have proposed resolution to call for hearings on Cook County Residential Property Tax Assessment Formula and Model, which is referred to Committee on Finance. Alman Ramirez Rosa and others have proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code by further regulating the city's welcoming ordinance and adding a new section two dash one seventy-three dash zero sixty-two concerning immigration enforcement operations, which is referred to Committee on Health and Human Relations. Two committees call the matters, refer to the Committee on Committees and Rules. Public safety. Alderman Telefiero and others have a proposed ordinance entitled "City of Chicago Homes for All" ordinance, which is referred to Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alman Telefiero and others also have a proposed order...ordinance to amend Chapter two dash twenty dash zero thirty of the municipal code concerning police powers of department employees, which is referred to Committee on Aviation. Alman Irvin has a proposed ordinance for vacation of portion of South Laughlin Street, which is referred to Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alman Irvin has a proposed ordinance for vacation of West Fifth Avenue within the area bounded by South Millard Avenue, West Congress Parkway, South Independence Avenue, and South Garfield Park, which is referred to Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alman Irvin and others have a proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code Chapter eight dash four by adding a new section eight dash four dash zero fourteen concerning criminal loitering, which is referred to Committee on Public Safety. Alman Secho Lopez and others have a proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code Chapter two dash forty-four by further regulating affordable housing commitment and creating a new section two dash forty-four dash zero eighty-five, expanding housing accessibility to low and moderate residents preserving long-term affordability, which is referred to Committee on Housing and Real Estate. Alman Taylor has a proposed ordinance for dedication of a public alley in a block bonded by East Sixty-Second Street, East Sixty-Third Street, South Greenwood Avenue, and South University Avenue, which is referred to Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alman Taylor and others have proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code Titles Two and Three by adding new sections two dash forty-four dash one thirty-five and two dash forty-four dash one forty concerning Obama Collective Bargaining Agreement Residential Area Affordable Housing Pilot Program and modifying section three dash thirty-three dash zero sixty concerning Chicago Real Property Transfer Tax, which is referred to Committee on Housing and Real Estate.
Alderman Harrison.
On there, is the community, the Obama community benefit residential?
Alman Thompson has a proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code Title Three by further regulating Chicago property tax abatement provisions for spouses of fallen police officers, soldiers, and rescue workers, which is referred to Committee on Finance. Alman Thompson has proposed orders for the issuing of permits for signed sign boards, which are referred to Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alman Sedloski Garza has a proposed ordinance for approval of opposed Atwater One Hundred and Sixth Street subdivision, which is referred to Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alman King has proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code Chapter nine dash sixty-eight by adding a new section nine dash sixty-eight dash zero twenty-seven concerning operation of seasonal parking programs, which is referred to Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alman Dow has proposed ordinance for issuance of permits for landmark property at twenty-four oh one South Gwabash Avenue, which is referred to Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alman Laspada has proposed orders for the issuing of permits for signed sign boards, which are referred to Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alman Laspada and others have proposed order to call for...call for a feasibility study to explore alternative options to existing franchise agreement with Commonwealth Edison Company, which is referred to Committee on Environmental Protection and Energy. Alman Laspada and Alderman Maldonado have proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code section four dash sixty dash zero twenty-two to allow additional alcoholic liquor licenses on portion of West North Avenue, which is referred to Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Alman Thompson has proposed ordinance to amend Rule Thirty-nine of City Council's Rules of Order and Procedures, calling for at least one-half of committee meetings to commence on or after six P.M., referred to Committee on Committees and Rules. Alman O'Shea and others have proposed order for amendment of municipal code Title Three by adding a new Chapter three dash fifty-one entitled Cannabis Tax, which is referred to Committee on Finance. Alman Rodriguez Sanchez has a proposed resolution regarding solidarity with the people of Puerto Rico, which is referred to Committee on Human Relations. Alman Secho Lopez has a proposed ordinance for a street vacation for construction at eleven oh one dash eleven thirteen North Van Buren Street, which is referred to Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alman Beal has a proposed ordinance for a rededication of portion of South Dodie Street, which is referred to Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alman Burke has a proposed ordinance for vacation of forty forty-four through forty-two ten South Healer Avenue, which is referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alman Riley has proposed ordinance for amendment of Chapter thirteen dash seventy-two of the municipal code by adding a new section thirteen dash seventy-two dash zero eighty-five concerning sale of condominium property, which is referred to Committee on Housing and Real Estate. Alman O'Shea and others have proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code Chapter seven dash twenty-four by adding new Article V dash B to regulate cannabis business establishments, which is referred to Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez has a proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code Title One by adding a new section one dash eight dash one twenty commemorating and promoting public awareness of indigenous people, which is referred to Committee on the Budget and Government Operations. Alman Rodriguez Sanchez and others have proposed ordinance to amend...Alman Maldonado and others have a proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code Chapter three dash thirty-three concerning Chicago Real Property Transfer Tax, which is referred to Committee on Finance.
Alderman Mitchell for the approval of the Journal.
Madam President, I am not aware of any corrections to the Journal. A move that'd be approved.
All those in favor of approving the Journal signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. Unfinished business? Alderman Mitchell.
Madam President, I'm not aware of any unfinished business.
Miscellaneous business?
Madam President, I'm not aware of any miscellaneous business.
Alderman Mitchell, the date and time of the next meeting?
I handed up an ordinance to the clerk stating that the date and time of the next meeting.
Clerk, please read the ordinance.
Alderman Mitchell has an ordinance setting the date and time of the next meeting of the City Council of the City of Chicago for Wednesday, September eighteenth, two thousand and nineteen, at ten o'clock a.m. in the City Council Chamber and City Hall.
Alderman Mitchell. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it, the ordinance is passed. Roll call on the omnibus.
Alderman Laspada, Alderman Hopkins, Alderman Dow, Alderman King, Alderman Hairston, Alderman Sawyer, Alderman Mitchell, Alderman Harris, Alderman Beal, Alderman Sedloski Garza, Alderman Thompson, Alderman Cardenas, Alderman Quinn, Alderman Burke, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Coleman, Alderman Moore, Alderman Curtis, Alderman O'Shea, Alderman Taylor, Alderman Brookins, Alderman Rodriguez, Alderman Tovarres, Alderman Scott, Alderman Secho Lopez, Alderman Maldonado, Alderman Burnett, Alderman Irvin, Alderman Telefiero, Alderman Roboyes, Alderman Cardona, Alderman Wagasback, Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez, Alderman Austin, Alderman Ramirez Rosa, Alderman Vegas, Alderman Mits, Alderman Spizato, Alderman Nugent, Alderman Vegas, Alderman Napolitano, Alderman Riley, Alderman Smith, Alderman Tony, Alderman Gardner, Alderman Kappelman, Alderman Martin, Alderman Osterman, Alderman Haddon, Alderman Silverstein.
The ayes are fifty, the nays are zero. The motion passes. Alderman Thompson on the motion reconsideration.
Madam President, motion to reconsider the vote.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no.
No.
The motion fails. Alderman Mitchell on the motion to adjourn.
There being no further business before the body, I move we stand adjourned.
All those in favor of the motion to adjourn signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. The motion is carried, the council is adjourned. Thank you.